The meeting. Round of applause. Are there any Grenadiers in the house? No? Alright, thank you. Have a good day. How are you feeling? Alright. Now, we as Grenadiers, we're known as people who love God, right? And we believe in God. Alright, so I believe in everything that we do. We're supposed to put God first. Not supposed to. We have to put God first, amen? Alright. So, this song I'm about to do, basically, let me just introduce myself a little bit. Again, my name is Randall Thomas, right? And I'm into the gospel thing. The crazy thing about it is, I have a brother named Hector Thomas, known as Mr. Legs. And everybody's like, "Oh, you're doing gospel and the man doing soca." So the man is a big man. The man shows what he wants to do. Well, as for me and my house, I was served a lot, amen? So, with this song I'm about to do right now, it's original. But it's a song that you cannot sit and enjoy. So you have to stand. So if you are all Grenadians and want to stand up on your feet, allow me to give God some praise, amen? Come on, come on. If you're Grenadians, stand up on your feet, man. Get up, get up. Stand up, people. Alright, listen to this. Don't bring the dachshund up. Shout hallelujah! Shout hallelujah! Shout hallelujah! Shout hallelujah! Listen. I've got a fever deep in my bones, and it only making me scream and shout. And the Holy Ghost power be moving just like a magnet. I've got a fever deep in my bones, and it only making me jump above. Oh, the Holy Ghost power be moving, I don't know. Satan think that he's gonna get my soul. But I want him to know my God in control. So he could try, but he cannot keep me down, 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 down. Listen, why? Because Satan is a loser man. Jesus, he is the champion. I say Satan is a loser man. Jesus... Pull up, pull up a jump. Pull up, pull up, pull up, pull up, pull up. Alright, time to get it through. Satan is a loser man. Jesus is the champion. Satan is a loser man. Jesus... Reel him up again, till the time. Alright. Listen, they say Grenadian people have real. And I find out, let's stand it up and watch, because they know the truth. But when we give him God praise, sometimes you don't know how you're feeling inside, but you just wanna lose, man. Shout hallelujah! Shout hallelujah! Shout hallelujah! Big up to Richard Nigel. I've got a fever deep in my bones, and it only making me scream and shout. Oh, the Holy Ghost power be moving just like a magnet. I've got a fever deep in my bones, and it only making me jump above. Oh, the Holy Ghost power be moving, I don't know. Satan think that he's gonna get my soul. But I want him to know my God in control. So he could try, but he cannot keep me down, 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 down. Oh, Satan is a loser man. Jesus is the champion. Satan is a loser man. Jesus is the champion. Say, fill the game, Jesus. Him is the number one. Fill the game, Jesus. Action there, action there. Here we go to Satan now. Tell me, we are going to stand the devil, step on the devil. Children of the king, I want him to stand the devil now. Stand the devil, step on the devil. Alright, stop it, Satan. I say now, stand the devil, step on the devil. Children of the king, I want him to stand the devil now. Stand the devil, step on the devil. Oh, Satan is a loser man. Jesus is the champion. Satan is a loser man. Jesus is the champion. Fill the game, Jesus. Number one. Fill the game, Jesus. Champion. I say, fill the game, Jesus. Him is the number one. If you believe in Jesus, tell me, hey, make some noise! Hey! Stand the devil, step on the devil. Children of the king, I want him to stand the devil now. Stand the devil, step on the devil. Children of the king, I want him to stand the devil now. Stand the devil, step on the devil. Children of the king, I want him to... Hey! People, now Satan. Listen up, Satan is a loser man. Oh! I say, fill the game, Jesus. Him is the... You must stop it, you want to get it. Say, fill the game, Jesus. Number one. Fill the game, Jesus. Get ready to stop, get ready to stop. Hey, hey! Stand the devil, step on the devil. Children of the king, I want him to stand the devil now. Stand the devil, step on the devil. Children of the king, I want him to stand the devil now. Stand the devil, step on the devil. Children of the king, I want him to stand the devil now. Stand the devil, step on the devil. Children of the king... Oh, Satan is a loser man. Jesus is the champion. Satan is a loser man. Jesus is the champion. Say, fill the game, Jesus. Him is the number one. Fill the game, Jesus. Alright, put up a voice, number one, number one. Fill the game, Jesus. Number one. Fill the game, Jesus. He is the champion. Fill the game, Jesus. Him is the number one. Fill the game, Jesus. Somebody scream! Hey! I don't know about you, but I love King Jesus. He is my Alpha and my Omega, amen? Oh! Number one. He is the number one, the number one. Oh! Give thanks and praise. Alright, this next song I'm gonna do, it's original as well. You don't want you guys to really ponder the words of this song. Track four, did you? What is going on in this world today? My life can't hardly live anymore. Give the Lord a chance. He can make me pray. Yeah! Is it for a man to give the world? Oh, this song. Oh! You've been alive recklessly. Almighty God will take control. Especially in this day and age. This one. So many signs all around you. Give him your heart, he will save you. What? Give him a chance in your life today. He will be your Lord and Savior. Don't turn your back and walk away. You don't wanna be lost, man. Give him a chance in your life today. Because he's coming back, he's coming back, he's coming back. Let him be your Lord and Savior. Oh! So many times we take it for granted. Acting like we don't know the Lord. Oh! The sun is coming, and it's coming of the Lord's child's sound. And he will burst the clouds. Oh! Many people will run into him. Begging for his forgiveness. But at that time, I know it will be too late. So, give him a chance in your life today. He will be your Lord and Savior. Don't turn your back and walk away. You don't wanna be lost, man. Give him a chance in your life today. He's coming back, he's coming back. Oh! You know, a lot of us don't know what's going on around the world. But I'm telling you, God is his spot, fulfilling. So you gotta give him a chance. So many people will come running to him. Begging for his forgiveness. But at that time, I know it will be too late. So, give him a chance in your life today. He will be your Lord and Savior. Don't turn your back and walk away. You don't wanna be lost, man. Give him a chance in your life today. Because he's coming back, he's coming back, he's coming back. Let him be your Lord and Savior. Give him a chance in your life today. He will be your Lord and Savior. Don't turn your back and walk away. You don't wanna be lost, man. Give him a chance in your life today. Because he's coming back. If you believe he's coming back, I want you to say it, left to right, left to right. Oh! Give him a chance in your life today. Say, don't turn your back and walk away. Give him a chance in your life today. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to say God bless you. Keep continuing praying for Grenada. Karikun Pitymartnik, amen? Alright, and also, I've worked with some, I did a CD last year. I've worked a couple of copies. If you're interested, those songs are on there, and many more. You know, we gotta show support to our local artists, especially the young men like me, who is using our talent to lift up the name of Jesus, amen? Check out CD, yes, yes, yes. Wonderful job. Let's carry it again. A round of applause for brother Jules. And now we call on another gospel artist, another up and coming, wonderful gospel artist, Zavers Ajil Jules. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. How are you feeling? Put our hands together for our brother Randall one more time. Yeah, you know what? As young people, we need every ounce of encouragement that we could get from, you know, the people out there, amen? So we're here to give God praise. How many of you are happy to be alive today? How many of you are thankful that you can breathe the free air that you're breathing now? How many of you are happy that you are from the most beautiful country in the whole wide world? I'm talking about Grenada, Karikun, Pitymartnik. I'd like to boast and say the island of spikes where everything is nice in Jesus Christ. Can we say that one more time? The island of spikes where everything is... No, 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 you gotta say it a little louder. Let me hear you. The island of spikes! In Jesus Christ. Alright, put your hands together for yourselves. And put your hands together for Almighty God. Give him a big, lusty round of applause. For the peace and the tranquility we enjoy in our country, we give God praise, ever conscious of God. Amen, hallelujah. I wanna do two songs for you today, and as we sing these songs, I want for you to reflect on the goodness of Almighty God. Can we do that? Amen. Alright. Everybody, put your hands together like this. Come on! Oh, yeah, yeah. Are you feeling good? I wanna see a smile on everybody's face. Come on! Yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, yeah. Lord, we worship you. You're so good and true. Make your presence known. And our hearts your home. Lord, we bow to thee. You have set us free. We see what you've done and how far we've come. You restored its soul when you made us whole. Now we're born again. We are not the same. Put your hands together, everybody, come on! We have joy singing praises to you all because you are faithful and true. We will shout hallelujah and sing. Awesome God, almighty. We have joy singing praises to you all because you are faithful and true. We will shout hallelujah and sing. Awesome God, almighty. Shout with joy, we will shout with joy. We will shout out loud with joy. Everybody shout with joy. Let me hear you! Come on, come on, come on. We can do better than that. Let me hear you, shout with joy, come on! Alright. Do you love Jesus? Say yeah! Lord, we worship you. You're so good and true. You're so good and true. Make your presence known. Make your presence known. And our hearts your home. And your heart your home. Lord, we bow to thee today. Lord, we bow to thee. You have set us free. You have set us free. We see what you've done. We see what you've done and how far we've come. You restored its soul when you made us whole. Now we're born again. We are not the same. Right now, you should know it. Sing, we have joy! We have joy. We have joy. Singing praises. Singing praises to you. You are faithful and true. Faithful and true. Hallelujah and sing. Awesome God, almighty. One more time, everybody sing. We have joy. Singing praises. Singing praises to you. All because you are faithful. You are faithful and true. We will shout hallelujah and sing. Awesome God, almighty. Shout with joy, we will shout with joy. We will shout out loud with joy. Come on, put your hands together for Almighty God. Do you love him today? It's Sunday, many of us, we just came from church, so we feel with the Holy Ghost, although we should be filled with the Holy Ghost every single day, amen? Hallelujah. But can I get you to just give God praise because he's been so good? Wow. No, 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 that was for me. Can we give God some praise right now? Amen, amen, hallelujah. I'm a proud Grenadian. Everywhere I go, people know that I'm a proud Grenadian. Amen, and I'm just so happy to be here representing my country. Wherever I go, to all these concerts and everything. And it's a privilege to be a Grenadian doing this gospel music here in New York City. Everybody's not a Calypsoian, everybody's not a soca artist. Some people are gospel singers. Isn't that good? You know? Good, good, good. I'm glad to see some of my brothers, some of the people who I admire from since I've been growing up, helping me to become the artist that I am today. I have this new song, it's called "All Hail Victorious One." It's a brand new single that will be released soon. The music video would also be released, and I wanna share it with you today. Is that okay? Is that okay? Alright, I wanna get some love from our Grenadian people. Alright. And ever, come on somebody, worship him! Hallelujah! We love and adore you. We bow down before you. We surrender our hearts to you, God. Somebody sing "All Hail Jesus." We worship you, we worship you. Hallelujah! We worship you. We worship you. We praise you. We love and adore you. We bow down before you. Lift your hands up and sing "All Hail Jesus." Because he's worthy of the glory. He's worthy of the honor. He's worthy of the praise. Can we worship him? Hallelujah! We worship you. Worship you. Love and you. Bow and he's coming. Oh! Jesus. Somebody worship God today. He's worthy of all the glory. He's worthy of all the praise. Of the honor. Hallelujah. God bless Grenada, Karikun, Pitymartnik. Amen, hallelujah. Keep trusting God. Keep trusting him, hallelujah. Can we just open up our mouths and give God one more round of praise? Come on, somebody say thank you, Jesus. Because many of us have been through a lot in this country, and it's only the power of God took us through, amen? So you gotta give God one last praise. Say thank you, Jesus. Amen, thank you. God bless you. Enjoy the rest of the evening. Yes, let me, I probably said it the wrong way. Good evening, Grenadians. Oh, no, there are not much Grenadians here. I'm gonna try it again. Good evening, my fellow Grenadians, Karikunians, Pitymartnians. We all are one people. If you're happy and you know it, let me just see you wave your hands. As a matter of fact, if you are Grenadian and you know it, let me hear you make some noise. Very good, very good. Let me welcome you to this our town hall meeting with the Prime Minister of Grenada, Karikun, Pitymartnik, and his delegation with him, Dr. the Right Honorable Keith Mitchell. And we will ask them to come to the platform. As I call their names, they will come to the platform. We have the first person to come to the platform. His Excellency, Mr. Derek James. Welcome to the platform, the Counsel General of Grenada, Karikun and Pitymartnik. Put your hands together and make some noise for Mr. Derek James. The Honorable Derek James. Next, his Excellency, Mr. Dennis G. Antoine, the prominent representative of Grenada to the United Nations, Ambassador Antoine. And then we have the Minister of Health and Social Security, Honorable Clarice Van Ness Corwin. Let us make some noise and to introduce himself. And then we have the fourth person to come to the podium, to the platform, Honorable Elvin Nimrod, Deputy Prime Minister and Minister of Affairs, Labor, Karikun and Pitymartnik of Affairs and Local Government. Did you introduce him with a round of applause? Did I hear you? Make some noise, make some noise. Don't worry about it. If we make enough noise, we'll get some hold on when it's finished. Don't hold me to it, though. And next to join us on the platform here is, former Foreign Minister, Mr. Peter David. Put your hands together. And ladies and gentlemen, it takes me great pleasure to introduce the man who has to shoulder the responsibility of the triland nation of Grenada, Karikun and Pitymartnik. And speaking of no other than the Prime Minister, Dr. the Honorable Keith Mitchell. I would like us to ask you to remain standing as we begin the program with prayer by Reverend Daniel. Put your hands together for Reverend Daniel as he comes to lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Gracious and eternal God, we come in your presence this day, the day that you have made a day that you have blessed us with many mercies. We thank you for life and for all that you have given us within this life. We thank you for our country, Grenada, Karikun and Pitymartnik, and all the blessings that you have bestowed on us over the many years, for our natural resources, and above all, for all our peoples, our peoples everywhere. We thank you that this day we can gather together to focus our attention... to focus our attention on the needs, on the issues, and the joys and the sorrows of our country. Especially at these very challenging times, times when we look for help, but we also look to offer ourselves and service to our country. We pray that this meeting may be one in which we can explore so many of these issues that concern us. We ask, Lord, that you may, by your divine presence, give to us your wisdom. Your wisdom that is not from any human being, but a wisdom that comes from a high that affords us the opportunity to see beyond our natural state. We pray for our government, for the Prime Minister, and for all those who are tasked with leadership in our country. We pray that they may not be just simply leaders for the sake of being leaders, but leaders who would lead your people with justice, for peace, with dignity and integrity. We pray that in all things, we may not take leadership for granted, but we may know that all power comes from you and you alone. And as you give it, so you can take it away. Help us not to be complacent in all our doings. And entrust us, we pray, with good responsibility, so that in all things, we may give you the glory, the praise and the honor. We pray for those who will seek to lead us in the future, that they may be mindful of all truth. We pray for those at home and those abroad. We pray remembering especially those who are unemployed, those who will be leaving school in just a few weeks and will be looking for employment. We ask, Lord, that you may open new ways so that they may know that there is a future, there is hope for the future for our country and for themselves. We ask your kind counsel upon us, oh God, in this time, so that we may look forward, we may go forward, knowing that you have called us to be a people, a people not made of fear, but a people will take the necessary steps that we need in order to carry our country forward. We pray that you will bless our country, you will bless our people, wherever we may be. These things we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
I beg to ask you to remain standing as we ask the beautiful Miss Miss Amene Siza, quite beautiful and quite talented. As a matter of fact, she is the former Independence College Queen and also the former Miss Caribbean New York 2011. Put your hands together as she comes and sings both national anthems for us.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof to the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wait? Oh, the land of the free and the home of the brave? Hail, Grenada, land of hearts! We pledge ourselves to thee as hearts and hands in unity to reach our destiny. Ever conscious of God, be proud of our heritage. May we with faith and courage as fire-filled and burning as one people, one family. God bless our nation!
Thank you very much. You may be seated. I don't know about you, but I'm feeling proud to be a Grenadian with such talents and lovely singing. It makes all of us feel proud, not only her mom, her parents, but we all feel proud. I have to make a correction in the introduction. In the introduction, when I asked Mr. Derek James to come to the platform, I introduced him as the Consul General. My very good friend, and I did not know that he is no longer the Consul General, but now he is the Ambassador to the United Nations with responsibility of the office for the coordination of humanitarian affairs and for Grenadian diaspora affairs. Don't ask me to repeat that. Congratulations, sir. So if you want to ask him to describe his title, the best way to describe the title, just say he is the OCHA. And that describes his responsibilities. I would like to ask now someone to come and give us a welcome. I want to ask Mr. Jonathan Duncan. Put your hands together for Mr. Jonathan Duncan as he comes to give us a welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First, to our Prime Minister of the beautiful island of Grenada, Caracu and Pitti Martnik, Keith Mitchell, Honorable Elvin Nemrod, Deputy Prime Minister and Minister of Legal Affairs and Labor, Honorable Clarice Modest, Minister of Health and Social Services, Mr. Peter David, former Foreign and Tourism Minister, on behalf of the forty thousand plus Grenadians, Caracu and Pitti Martnikans here in the tri-states of New York, New Jersey and Connecticut, I wish to welcome you all to our home away from home. We are delighted to have you here to participate and share information about our homeland. We are particularly pleased to know that you have taken the time to come and update us on the development back home and tell us how we can play a role in nation building. Thank you for coming. We know you all have traveled far. However, we appreciate the time you are giving us today. To you, the public, I say welcome to this meeting. And let us be reminded that after we listen and ask questions, we must leave here more committed and contributing to our nation's development. We are honored to have all our guests. We hope you enjoy your entire stay in New York. And as you travel to Canada, we wish you safe travel and a successful trip. Mr. Prime Minister, as a young man standing here to welcome you and your delegation, I am honored. And I ask of you to continue to do all you can to build a better Grenada, Caracu and Pitti Martnik for us, because one day I could be the person being called Prime Minister of Grenada. Once again, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Jonathan. I must commend the organizers of the program because when I look at it, I don't see anybody that is older than me yet come to the platform. There's a number of young people. And put your hands together for the organizers to act and involve our young people. They are not the leaders of tomorrow, but they are the leaders of today. And they continue to lead out in the program and activities of life whereby they make us all proud as Grenadians. Our first speaker will be the Minister of Health and Social Security, the Honorable Clarice Modest Corwin. But before she comes, I will ask Dr. Anthony Bridgeman to come and do the proper introduction of our next speaker. Put your hands together to Dr. Bridgeman.
As protocol has already been established, ladies and gentlemen, it gives me great pleasure to introduce our Minister of Health and Social Security of Grenada, Caracu and Pitti Martnik, Dr. Clarice Modest Corwin. Max DePree, in his book, Leadership is an Honor. Right, the first responsibility of a leader is to define reality. The last is to say thank you. And in between the two, the leader must become a servant and adapter to the people. That sums up the progress of an truthful leader. I'm very happy to report to you this evening that the people on the days exemplifies this attribute of a leader. Since taking the portfolio, the Prime Minister and his team have been defining our current reality in Grenada and have put measures in place to correct it. While at the same time, they have said thank you to the people for the understanding and the continued sacrifice. One of the cabinet ministers who have been at the forefront of this cause is our Health Minister, the Honorable Dr. Clarice Modest Corwin. Because you see, ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Corwin has been at helm for a long time. Here is a short bio, professional summary of who she is. She's known as Teacher Clarice. She started her teaching career as a science teacher at Wadman Junior Secondary School. She later opted to pursue medicine in the Republic of Cuba. And upon completion of her studies, she returned to continue serving the people of St. Mark's, where she's known as the Doc. In 1998, as a result of a long commitment and enthusiasm for health sector transformation in Grenada, she was appointed a member of the Senate of Grenada and immediately became the junior minister. In 1999, she became the Minister of Health and Environment. Then in 2003, she became the Minister of Communication and Works and continued her relentless effort in nation building. Ladies and gentlemen, as the record indicates, she effectively responded to the challenge of Hurricane Ivans and Emily that devastated the nation. She worked closely with the Prime Minister and his team and international donors. Grenada made a remarkable recovery that saw the timely restoration of the nation's infrastructure. Between 2007 and 2008, she held a Ministry she held a Ministry of Tourism Portfolio and continued her diligent work which saw major extension to some of our tourism facilities, such as the world-renowned Port Louis Marina, New Crochet Port on the Espinar, the Bus Terminal on Melville Street and the Bruce Street Mall. Apart from her distinguished ministry distinguished service as a Minister of Government, she has also found time to remain engaged in civil service and philanthropic initiatives. Here are a few examples. She collaborated with Dr. Hasbeck to publish a learning document on the importance of culture of HIV and AIDS. She participated in the study with Dr. Bourne to assess the benefit of implementing a visiting cardiology program in Grenada. She has researched and published educational pamphlets on prevention of blindness, diabetic retinopathy and glaucoma. She was the recipient of the Caribbean Council for the Blind Award for extending services to the people of Grenada, Caracu and Pitti Martnik in the prevention of blindness. Ladies and gentlemen, as we can see this evening, Dr. Modest Corwin has exhibited the attributes and elements of an effective leader in the health field. She has the skill set that is required to do the job. So please join me in welcoming her to New York. So ladies and gentlemen, I present to you Dr. Corwin.
Pleasant good evening to all. Doctor the Prime Minister, Doctor the Honorable Keith Claudius Mitchell and my team at the head table, who have been already introduced, so I will not take time in doing that. Ladies and gentlemen, brothers and sisters all. First of all, I want to say that I am proud and honored to be a Grenadian. Just as many of you are. And I'm so happy to be with the diaspora. And I want to thank all of you, Dr. Mitchell, for inviting me to be with the team, to come and meet with our people in New York and to visit them in other parts of North America, in Canada and in Montreal and Toronto. Brothers and sisters, why am I proud to be a Grenadian? I have seen over the years, before politics and afterwards in my active political life, I have seen Grenadians in the diaspora come out and help Grenada on a consistent basis, but especially in our greatest time of need during Hurricanes Ivan and Emily and even in our present time, in our tough economic time, the diaspora has been there for us. So I'm happy to be a Grenadian. And the first thing I wanted to do was to thank Grenadians who have come out for Grenada, who are supporting, and also many friends of Grenada through the influence of Grenadians who have helped us along, especially in healthcare, but in many other areas of need in the tri-island state. So sometimes, if my time goes out and I don't get the time to say thank you, then I'm left to be sitting there regretting not having said thanks. So I wanted to say that first and foremost. Brothers and sisters, our friends in the diaspora have assisted us greatly. And I want to limit myself to the Ministry of Health to say that, having come in government and met a very difficult situation, you in the diaspora gave us in the Ministry of Health hope to carry on. And I want you to know that. Because of your donations, monetary and material, you have made a significant difference to our delivery of healthcare to Grenada, Caracu and Pitti Martnik. Brothers and sisters, as I said before, these are tough economic times. I know you're feeling it here. We're feeling it even more. They say, when you sneeze up here, we catch the cold. So we have the cold down there in terms of our economic malaise. And thank God, again, I am proud to be a part of a team with a leader that is not only lamenting and crying troubles, but also seeking solutions and seeking to implement solutions for the betterment of our people. We are all aware as a team, that is not going to be easy. But we've called on the nation to share sacrifices. And we, it's shared sacrifices. We are doing our own too. I came up here and for the first time in a lot of years, I did not have roaming on my phone because we decided that we have to share the sacrifice and cut it off. So if, no, I think I was going to beg for a phone call, but somebody let me one already. So that is how we live. That is how we live, and we're sharing the sacrifice. So I wanted you to know that. Now, brothers and sisters, it is said that government is a continuum. So when you come into government, if there's good that is already in progress, then you ought to take it up and run with it. And we are committed to doing that. Also, if you meet problems, like you meet debts, you can't say you weren't the one who negotiated or caused the debt. You have to take it up and run with it and deal with it. I must say that we have not met a lot of positive things in progress that we could run with, unfortunately. But we have met a lot of the problems and we are working today with. But we have met a lot of the problems and we are working to deal with it. So in the areas that I'm going to speak about, I would just want you to mention a few things. So for example, in the Ministry of Education, my colleague minister, he met with a debt owing to UE, most of you will know it as University of the West Indies, a debt of $16 million owing in terms of economic costs for our students. So that students wanting to go to university had to find all of the university fees to pay. And that made it extremely difficult. And through our Prime Minister and Minister for Finance, his team is working, they have paid some monies. And the good thing is, once these institutions see that you're willing to pay, they usually say, well, you'll pay the rest and we'll start taking your students again. So again, our students who want to go to a high institution of learning in the region, they are now able again to go to the University of the West Indies because we have been able to pay some of what we owe. Coming into the Ministry of Health, brothers and sisters, again, I met with many challenges. There is an institution in the region that is called the OICS, Whole Prepariment Unit, we call it PPS. And they source medications and other medical supplies for us in the region, in the Eastern Caribbean, so that with bulk purchasing, we can reduce on the cost. And they have done it very effectively. But again, we had not been paying our dues and so the OICS discontinued the supply of material medicines and lab supplies to our hospitals and our other institutions. So that was a hurdle that we had to overcome. We were owing Pan American Health Organization for vaccines and so they discontinued sending vaccines for us. Again, they purchased for us at a very reasonable rate. And you know, I mean, those of you who, all of you have lived with Grenada, you can't tell you the last day we had polio or measles or mumps or any one of those communicable diseases that can be prevented by vaccines. We have had a very effective program over the years in the high 90s in terms of coverage. And so we were at risk of seeing all those diseases returning. Because remember, even though we have kept it under control in Grenada, we live in a global village and so all people visit other countries and they can contract it if they're not covered. And also persons visit our countries and they can share, among other things that they, good things that they can share, they can share the bad as well in terms of diseases. Brothers and sisters, in the area of social services, which also administers the housing program. Again, we met a debt owing to all of the hardware suppliers for housing material. And any parliamentary representative will tell you that the two greatest needs that we encounter in our communities are the need for jobs and the need for housing. And therefore, we were greatly challenged, particularly the Ministry of Social Services, to provide that, or supply that need because we were owing. The fact is, brothers and sisters, I had to set the stage and let you know what we meant. But most importantly, I want to tell you what we have been doing and what we intend to do. So you may hear your brothers and sisters calling and bragging because it is tough. We are undertaking some shared sacrifice that would not make things easier in the beginning, but it will give us hope. And since that is not my area of expertise, I will leave it to my Prime Minister to tell you in terms of economic activity, what we are doing to bring benefits later on. And I know he will competently speak on those issues. So brothers and sisters, what are we doing? In education, as I said before, we have started to pay the debts. So now our students can go to the University of the West Indies without having to pay the economic costs. They have enough other costs to deal with already. But also, we found a situation very chaotic in that in recent years, they implemented a system called universal access to secondary school. It meant that everyone coming from primary school went into secondary school. Now, in principle, I have no problem with that and my government has no problem with that. The problem is, if you're not prepared because you have persons of different capacities and different interests and our schools are generally geared towards the academic, then we have to ask ourselves, what happens to the person who is not academic minded? The person who wants to have a skill, learn to make tables and chairs, or be a plumber or an electrician? So one of the problems, we were not ready for it yet. And in terms of having the teachers and tutors who were ready to administer the program, that was another thing. So while we do not mind universal access into secondary school, it has to be capably and effectively planned for. Otherwise, we could encounter problems. And that is what we encountered, brothers and sisters. So our President Minister for Education and his team, they are looking at it. When you see a child entering secondary school who cannot read and write, brothers and sisters, this is a catastrophe. This is a crisis. And if you ask people, they will tell you that. When you see a school sending up 80-plus students to do an English test for the CXC or GCA, as you may have called it, whatever, and you get three and four passes in English, this is a catastrophe. This is a disaster. And so while we do not have Hurricane Ivan and Emily plaguing us, we do have those kinds of disasters that are plaguing our nation. And as you well know, that education is the single greatest factor that would lead people, our people out of poverty and develop a nation. And if our education is not adequate, then we are in serious trouble. So while the universal access has not worked, the minister is engaging his team, his administrative persons, as well as specialists in the area of teaching. And they have been meeting on a regular basis, looking at trying to resolve that problem, how we are going to deal with it. So you may hear now that your little niece or grandniece or nephew or grandchild in Grenada did not get to go into the secondary school because some of them just have not been prepared. And they will get frustrated and it will be worse in the end. So Minister is saying that they have to keep them back in the primary school, provide special classes and sessions for them to take them up to basic reading, writing and mathematics. And also to teach them a skill. Because one of the things that we learned in our previous life when we were in government, we did a study and we found that there was a major skills gap. While our children were getting 14 and 15 passes at CXC and so with distinction, we have very bright children. Don't worry, I'm talking about a percentage. But every child who does not succeed within the education system is of concern to us. So while this is not the mainstream, we have a lot of children who perform. And sometimes I see young boys and girls on the street and chatting with them, they will tell you they have associate degree, they have this subject and they have that subject. So we have, we are a bright nation and we have bright people. So don't think I'm sending that kind of message. But we have some children who are in trouble because the system was not organized to take care of them. So brothers and sisters, a program is going to be done for them. And in the interest of time, I will not go into it, but I want to assure you that the minister and his team are working with it and the rest of us in cabinet are there waiting to support him when he does come with another type of program that will answer to the needs. But there are other educational programs that we're doing for those who are dropped out. So Social Services is offering training for young men and young women who for whatever reason did not succeed in school and dropped out. They're giving them a second chance in a variety of programs. Now we have young women through Social Services being trained in building technology, in laying tiles, in electrical wiring, and things like the non-traditional areas of skills that our women did not get involved in. But as we know, many of our young women who fall pregnant teenage pregnancy in their early years, they're just home without a skill and hopeless. So this is offering new hope to our young people. But brothers and sisters, we have a program called the Imani Program. And I sat there and I was trying to remember what it meant. I had a senile moment and I hope somebody can help me. I think it's trust in yourself or love of self, something like that. Confidence in yourself. Faith, that is the word, faith in yourself. And that program was started by us before, not this last time, before. Because brothers and sisters, we saw a number of young people leaving school with no hope. Because as you know, it is impossible for our government to provide jobs for everybody. But we are committed to creating the enabling environment, the opportunities, the teaching opportunities, so they can find businesses on their own. And again, I know others will speak about one initiative we're taking to give them opportunities to set up their own businesses and employ. But first, they have to be trained. So at this time, we have 3,000 young people in various areas of job training, in the private sector and in the public sector. Those people were the ones sitting on the block with subjects or some without subjects, but a desire, a yearning to get into something and to stay out of trouble. And now that program under the Ministry of Youth is offering them just that kind of opportunity. And again, through the enabling environment created by the government, some of which you see us representing here today, brothers and sisters. I know my colleague Minister for Youth has said that based on the demand, she is going to request more. And I know World Bank and other institutions have been extremely supportive of this project. And especially as we look at the Caribbean region as one space and free movements of people, when we train our people and we train them according to standards, not just bringing them in a course and at the end of the day, they can't get a certificate. But they are going to be certified according to Caribbean and CARICOM standard and according to international standard, so that wherever they go, they can find a place in terms of employment. The Ministry of Youth is doing a lot more, brothers and sisters. But in the interest of time, I will just say that they are bringing now, it's youth and sports. They're bringing now more cricket into the area. For years now, our stadium has been like a white elephant. But now we're bringing our stadium back to life. And I know my Prime Minister is keen on cricket and he knows more details than I do. So brothers and sisters, we are looking at what we can do. I just wanted to add, in the areas of Social Services, we have a program that helps young people to go to school. They cannot pay the transport that is provided. Because we are well aware that because of the unemployment situation that we met prevailing and will continue indefinitely as we work on programs, that we have to still continue to educate our children. So if we have a school feeding program that gives them food at $1 per day for their lunches, and even those who do not have, get free lunches. And also, we have the assistance for transport under both Social Services and the Ministry of Education. And persons are also given assistance for the tuition fees if they cannot. But I want to emphasize that as a government experiencing tough challenges and perhaps even if things were better, we would be severely challenged to provide those things for everyone. So what we say is we cannot give it to everybody. But certainly, what we have is officers trained in that area going out in the field. When children do not go to school, they inquire why. And if they see a socioeconomic situation that prevents children from going to school, then the government steps in and assists those children so that they can avail themselves to an educational opportunity. So in the areas of Social Services, in the areas of education, there is quite a lot going on. And some persons may speak to it as they make their presentation. But brothers and sisters, I want to tell you that you know Grenada, Grenada is a revolutionary country. And at this time, we're revolutionizing how we do things in our country so that we can make it better for everyone in the near future. And brothers and sisters, because I am Minister for Health, I thought I needed to take a little more time in the area of health and I wanted to just share some things with you concerning health. Brothers and sisters, we want in our government to provide healthcare that is affordable, that is accessible to all, and that is sustainable. Because we had difficulties in paying for supplies over the years. And I say we as a government, because we have to take on whatever we met in a situation. Whereas in a previous time when we were government, suppliers were willing to advance us without pay. Now you find that no supplier was willing to advance us any medication, no matter how important it was to save lives. And therefore, the Minister of Finance and Prime Minister had to find ways, innovative ways, to find monies to pay them. So sometimes you might have to find $1.5 million in a one-off to pay the OICS PPS and they will send you drugs. But then there are roads to be fixed, there are children to be sent to school, the school feeding program, et cetera, et cetera. How do we sustain that to ensure that every time somebody goes to accident and emergency, we call it casualty in Grenada, they can find the medication that they need for pain relief and other types of relief? How do we ensure that the lab has reagents to do blood tests on a sustained basis? These have been some of the questions that we have asked ourselves. And how do we ensure that we provide a service that will be exemplary, that will make people happy, even though it cannot compare to our first world country, but for a third world country would be an excellent service for our people? We have organized over that, we have had a number of workshops with people in the Ministry of Health and for all the stakeholders. And we have come up with some answers. The first thing is, brothers and sisters, it's something that we know already, that the best way to address healthcare is to keep people healthy, first of all. So we have thought of revitalizing our primary healthcare program, go back out in the communities, educate people, promote wellness, exercise. What you eat, what you drink is important. And we are saying each one of you must also take responsibility for your health. So if we educate you, then you must go and exercise. And if you do get diseases, then if we manage it adequately, then we, that would be a way of preventing expenses in the wrong direction and also keeping people healthy so that they can be productive and make a contribution in their country. So we have revitalized that program. We have taken on some new physicians, we couldn't take on many, we've taken on five. But when we came in, brothers and sisters, we met about 100 nurses trained, sitting down at home, doing nothing and frustrated. We took on 42 of those nurses and we put them out in the community. We said, who want to do food care, want to educate diabetics? See what's happening to them and ensure that they do not fall through the cracks. Follow patients as they're discharged from hospital and go in the community and see what their needs are. And patients who are referred, see how we can do it. So we've started that about a year ago. From July, we'll be celebrating one year. And already, we're revisiting, we're sending out questionnaires to our people. How can we better serve you and make what we do more meaningful? So we have diverted more monies and in our budget, we have allocated $2 million for that additional program that we have started. So we do have, we did have a primary healthcare program before, but in order to strengthen it, we had to pay more nurses and more doctors. I know you're asking what happened to the rest of the 100 nurses. What we did is because we did not have the financial capacity to employ them because it's one thing to take somebody on. It's one thing, it's the other thing at the end of the month, not to be able to give them a salary. So that is important. And brothers and sisters, I know you are Grenadians and you're patriotic and you follow what's happening. And over the years, not so long ago, what we found was a situation where at the end of the month, the then government was not able to pay salaries. You know what I'm talking about. It's not bad talking, it's a reality. And if not so long ago, they could not pay it, in one year and some, we can magically find a means to pay everybody. So what we did, I spoke with, I heard that Trinidad was taking in nurses. Already they were taking in nurses from St. Vincent. And so I spoke with the minister and my Prime Minister spoke with the Prime Minister of Trinidad and Tobago and we asked whether they could take them on. Because it pained me, when one nurse said to me, she said, you know, I'm beginning to hate nursing. I thought it was a profession where I could easily get a job. And here I am at home, two years on. And as you well know, when you get your driver's license, that's when you learn to drive. So if you train nurses and you cannot afford them a job, then nurses are in trouble. By the time they get employed, they may forget a lot of the skills. And therefore, while we would have liked to employ all of them, we had taken a policy decision a long time ago, recognizing that there's a demand within region and worldwide for nurses. To train some, since we cannot employ everybody, train them. So when they go out, the United Arab Emirates and other countries are taking in nurses. And I think even some institutions in the US are sending out now agents to taking our nurses. We said, why not train some young people who have left school? So we're working with the Imani Program, the Youth Program, to bring someone into the nursing assistant and the nursing program. And we went to Trinidad and they said they could take them. Trinidad needs quite a Trinidad needs quite a few nurses. And so very soon, in the next few days, perhaps before I leave North America, because they said from the eighth they will be taking on. They have interviewed, everything has been done. And all of our nurses who are sitting home doing nothing, the rest of them will be taken on by our sister island, Trinidad and Tobago. So we continue to work with St. George's University. They have a school, they have a school of nursing. It's kind of on hold for now, but we working to have a school of excellence in nursing. Because in our government system, we cannot go, we have not, we have not established the capacity to train them in the bachelor's and in the master's. And now the region is saying, the entrance requirement for, to get into the nursing profession, you have to have a bachelor's. And I'm sure you know what's happening in the US as well. And so SGU has the capacity to try to get resource persons to train people. And we working with them. At heads level, our Prime Minister is working with the Chancellor. And we, the Ministry of Health and Education, we working with St. George's University to train more nurses, to work with our people in Grenada, but also to go there and get jobs so that they can send back monies to their families. We good at that, you have done it before and we will continue to do that, brothers and sisters. And I just want to mention briefly, I just want to mention briefly that as we redefine health, we redefine the roles of our nurses and our nursing assistants. And we teach them to multitask and we multi-train them. Because you cannot tell me that a nurse only has to dress and also or give an injection. We have to go there, we have to go there and do food care. We have to go there and monitor blood pressures. We have to bring in the persons who for some reason could not come to meet the doctors in their appointment and educate them. We have to meet with community persons and educate them. Because if we educate them in healthcare, then we can teach them wellness and keep them healthy, brothers and sisters. So we have teams, just recently we had a team going to Concord for the whole day to educate people in different areas. We had specialists going out and they saw over five hundred people in one day, brothers and sisters. So we are working to earn your respect and your confidence. And we are going to continue to do more and more of that. In terms of the medical supplies, as I said, the Ministry of Finance are behind the Ministry of Health, recognizing that health is the wealth of a nation. And they paid many of the bills in excess of six million dollars thus far so that we can regain the trust of our providers of materials. And we working on that on a daily basis. But sometimes you will hear that we don't have this and we don't have that. Because we really have not reached the economic level where we can always have these things. But we working on initiatives. My Prime Minister and Minister for Finance will be speaking about the national health insurance. But we are saying, brothers and sisters, even if it's going to be quality, if it's going to be accessible to everybody, if it is going to be sustainable, which means every time they can get it, we have to have contributions. It cannot be free. As they said, the Chinese say, good things go cheap and cheap things don't go. If you get it free and you get it all the time, it cannot be good. It cannot be top quality, that's a reality. I wish we could do it for everybody, but we cannot. So we are looking at ways to collect revenues. People come from abroad, there may be Grenadians who can afford, or there may be foreigners, they go to accident and emergency. They are treated, they have insurances. And we have no system in place to collect some monies so that we can buy the pan out for those who cannot afford. This does not make sense and we making room to do that, brothers and sisters. So only this week, we sent from Ministry of Health, new fees and an incremental plan. Now, Prime Minister will talk to you about some of the taxes that we're implementing. And so we saying you can't put all of it on the people all at once. What we do, we can immediately start with those who have insurances. And many people who visit the country, they do have insurances. So there are some areas we're going to start, but it's going to be gradual so that people don't feel too much of the burden all at once and get frustrated, brothers and sisters. But also, we are aware that there are some people who will never be able to pay. They are sick, they are indigent, they are elderly and they're not able to pay. And we working with social services to identify those people. Many of them are already in a program organized by social services so that we will examine them. And we are coming up with a national ID. And within that ID will be information that says this person is examined. So when a poor person goes to accident and emergency or casualty, as we say, and that card is wiped, then that will come up. So that person doesn't have to run back for treatment. It is their right and they are protected by the state, brothers and sisters. So they can have access to that, everybody. So we are looking for monies. We love the donations you send. But we also are aware that there are some people who cannot afford. And that is where your donations help to make so much of a difference, brothers and sisters. So we not anywhere where we can start showing off. We love what you do and thank you again so much. We have a donations desk in the ministry. We know over the years, people say, we send something, we don't know if you get it. If you didn't get it, nobody says, "Thank you." Those days are over. We have two persons, brothers and sisters, dedicated to that. They will respond and persons who have sent will attest to that, that they get a response. If you want photos, we send you photos. And if you want an other list, we also send you that as well, brothers and sisters, with a thank you note. But we are not only doing those kinds of services, we have put new equipment. Within one year, within collaboration with St. George's University, we have put new equipment in the hospital. So we have now a new digital X-rays. So that our doctors who are specialists, Grenadian doctors abroad, and we have a lot in the US, in New York and other places, we might want to tap their brain to ask them a question. We can just send the images to them digitally and they can play a meaningful role in terms of the management of our healthcare. We have, we have an endoscopy unit. But over the years, because the services were not provided, then the equipment, they developed winds and they flew away. When we came in, we couldn't find the equipment. So again, we have purchased the equipment. And through our collaboration, which I will speak to shortly about, with St. George's University, we have endoscopy services. Every month for the indigent who cannot afford and even for other people as well. Because for endoscopy, it costs from a thousand dollars upwards. So you know that a lot of people in Grenada will not be able to afford it. Brothers and sisters, an oxygen plant. So many times we hear we don't have oxygen. You're waiting on the cylinder to come from Trinidad. So if they both break down by somewhere between Trinidad and Grenada, you can't get oxygen. And when we came in and we had dialogue with St. George's University, they said they were willing. And through that collaboration, we have purchased a brand new oxygen plant that provides oxygen for the nation. Pulling oxygen from the air and concentrating it so that we provide our home. We have trained our staff, the providers of the serving, the machines and so on, they have come in and they have helped it all the way, all the way. In addition, in the X-ray department, we also got a two ultrasound machine, one being portable. Because there are times when you have to go to the patient. The patient cannot come to the X-ray department. And therefore, we thought it both to have one that is stationary and one that is mobile. And we have done that in brothers and sisters in just one year of being in office. You give us five years, you give us ten years, you give us fifteen years, you know that there will be a lot more, brothers and sisters. Brothers and sisters, I mentioned relationship with St. George's University. We felt, you know, having gone to different meetings and so on, people say, you have a school of medicine, what are they doing? And we recognize that if we worked harmoniously with them, there's a lot more that we could get. So in addition to finances that they give us every year, they have a bank of, a skills bank of all the doctors who have graduated from St. George's University and who have qualified in various areas of expertise, in cardiology, in pediatric ophthalmology and a number of other areas, which I have here, but somewhere, but I can't find it. But in a number of areas, they are coming back every month to give services to all people in those areas free of cost, brothers and sisters. But you know, one of the things that is a little troubling is that there is no Grenadian on the team. So I've been speaking to Ambassador Antoine, I've been speaking to Ambassador James. And we hope we can remedy that in the shortest possible time. To have a skills bank of our Grenadian professionals. I know we could look at every area. I've just been a little bit discriminating at this time to speak for health. Whether it's nurses in a particular area that could teach our people some skills to go out there. Customer relations to teach them how to manage a patient, how to deliver service with care and love, anything like that. Because we know that we have a great diaspora out here who can make a significant difference. And we welcome any contribution that you would be willing to make, brothers and sisters. Brothers and sisters, there's a lot going on. There's a lot more that we need to do. And as we look at a variety of programs for upgrading our staff or team so that they can better provide the services. We know that you are asking the question all the time. If I leave America and come down, what can you offer me in terms of healthcare? And we will, and we will be speaking to that, not me, but the person who is working behind the scenes and is behind in that will speak to it when the time comes. But I want to assure you that we leave no stone unturned to ensure that we can give the best possible healthcare to our nation. We're not going to compete with anybody. Some people have resources that we do not have. But for whatever is available, we are going to maximize it. We are going to focus more on primary healthcare. We're going to take care of our indigents as we go ahead. And brothers and sisters, very importantly, we're going to ensure that we have an educated, healthy nation so that they can make a meaningful contribution to our triennial development in our triennial state. I thank you very much.
Okay, well, let us again thank the Minister of Health for the wonderful presentation she has given to us. Presentation which was quite simple in a way that every one of us could understand not only what she presented, but how we could help to help the situation which she mentioned now. Just by way of announcements, if you drive a Black Lexus, tag number DSF, the SF ten seventy one zero seven zero, you need to attend to your vehicle right now. If you also drive Toyota Corolla, plate number FXX six nine nine two, FXX six nine nine two, you need to attend to your vehicle also right now. And if you drive a Toyota and the number is seven three three one, seven three three one, you also need to attend to your vehicle right now. I also like to recognize some persons that are here with us. We have the Consul General of Saint Lucia, Mr. Julian DeBois and his wife. Put your hands together as we recognize them. If it was not diplomatically incorrect, I would have said that Mr. DeBois is a Grenadian born in Saint Lucia. At every function, he go to, he is there to support and to represent Saint Lucia. Put your hands together again for him. Thank you very much. We also have the former Consul General of Grenada, Mr. Ronald Charles is here with us. And put your hands together as we recognize him. The Commissioner of Prisons for the island of Grenada, Karen Lyles of Grenada, Karen Juan Pitymartini is here also. Mr. Ashby Ramphor, put your hands together as we recognize him. George Radex, our husband, I'm here, we'd like to recognize you also. Thank you, thank you very much for coming. We also have a representative to the Governor of the State of New York. Governor, former representative is here, Jovia Radex. And let us recognize her as she comes and show the support of the Governor of New York. We have also two journalists with us and we want to recognize them, Mr. Nelson King and Mr. Tony Best. Thank you very much. I will now introduce the person who will introduce the next speaker. I will call upon His Excellency, Mr. Derek James, to introduce our next speaker, who is going to be Mr. Piven. Mr. Piven David. Put your hands together for His Excellency as we bring to us the speaker, Mr. Piven David.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think I have the easy job this afternoon. Because Peter Charles David, or Charles Peter David, is no stranger to us. Peter Charles David, born in Grenada and studied at GBSS, then migrated to Canada to study at Calton University. Upon his studies, he went back to Grenada during the revolution and served during the revolution. Returned to the US and studied law and became a practicing lawyer in Brooklyn. And many of you know that he had served some seven years practicing law in New York. Upon his tiredness of being in New York, he then went back to Grenada in 2000 and continued to serve in frontline politics. Former Foreign Minister and former Tourism Minister, Peter Charles David is one who loves people. He's one who gave all of his salaries, in fact, not only his salaries, but some of his friends' salaries to people because they are in need. And I am not just saying so because I know my salary has gone to him to pay. So Peter, who's someone who loves people, and it's no strange thing for us to see Peter David is here today because he is about to take another step in his career to serve the people of Grenada, Caracun and Pitymartini. I want to welcome my good friend, Peter Charles David, to the podium. What do you mean, dear brothers and sisters? Prime Minister, the Honorable Eith Misha, Deputy Prime Minister, the Honorable Erwin Nemrad, Minister of Health, the Honorable Fares Wadess, Ambassador to United Nations, Mr. Antoine and my dear friend, Ambassador Derek James. First of all, let me thank the organizers of this activity for doing a wonderful job. I think we have a wonderful group of people here this evening. And I want you to give yourself a round of applause to be here. Brothers and sisters, I also want to recognize the role of the diaspora in the economic development of the country. My dear sisters, look at the contributions you have made in healthcare otherwise. I think the contribution you have made, not only with respect to specific areas, but with respect to economic development that you're well aware, remittances to our country, I think contributes, maybe the Minister of Finance will correct me, but upwards of ten percent of GDP. And that is because of your commitment, your patriotism to the people of Grenada. I also want to thank many of you for the support I have received from you over the many years of my own political involvement. I want to say thanks. I see many of my dear friends here this evening, persons who I've known since I was a child in GBSS, in high school and in many other areas. I want to thank you for being here and giving me support. And I want to say to you that while I have struggled in many respects and there have been difficulties, it's been an absolute joy, absolute pleasure for me to serve the people of Grenada. I stand here this evening for the first time as a member of the New National Party. The last time I stood here, I was not a member of the New National Party. I was a minister of government. But I want to say here this evening that I want to really thank the members of the New National Party, the grassroots members of the party, who have been nothing but extremely welcoming of me in this party. I want to thank you and tell you I hope that you have a wonderful year. I also want to thank my personal leader, the Honorable Keith Mitchell, who has always said to me that I was in the wrong place. But I hope he believes now I'm in the right place. And the Honorable Nemrad, who's been a dear friend to me for many, many years. We practiced in New York together, we lived in Trinidad together, and we do many things together that I can't see on the record. Honorable Monesta, I want to thank you too for your warm welcome into the party and for your graciousness with me over the many years, even while we were combating on different sides. And to my many, many friends, to my many, many friends who are not members of the LNP, who are maybe members of another party, I want to say thank you. Because while we may not be in the same party at the moment, we remain committed to the same thing, Project Grenada. And I know how many of you here this evening, I got straight to the point. You ask the question, why? Why is it that Peter David joined the LNP? So let us place this in context. Let us put some context to what has happened. After more than ten years as General Secretary of the National Democratic Congress, I and many others, I think there were formerly about ten of us, ten leaders of the party were expelled, but many, many more were prolonged of the party. So when I became a member of the LNP, for those who didn't listen to the news, I was not a member of another party. I was with old party. The fact is that I was expelled from a party without ever being given a reason. You know, I said to one air program the other day, why was I expelled? And he said to me, well, there were some views of you. I said, well, I have practiced criminal law for the last upwards of twenty years. And every single person who was accused of anything, they were given a trial ala Harry. I, who was General Secretary, was not afforded such a privilege. As I said to my friends last week, we were going along the road as if we were in a bus. The driver just stopped the bus and just give more. That is after we worked hard for many years. And we moved the party from zero seats. Because when I came into another party, it was as if it was zero seats. We moved it to seven and then we moved it to eleven. But you know, we nearly won the one in 2003. I don't know if you saw his team or was shaking in their boots in 2003. But he escaped us in 2003, and we catch him in 2008. But after being so successful, the team that took the party from zero to eleven was summarily kicked out without reason and without explanation. For more than a year and a half, I remained and my dear colleagues, and I say we because every decision I take, I consult with my dear colleagues who we've struggled with for many years. For more than a year and a half, remained outside of the party. But we observed the political process. We did not just extricate ourselves, we participated, but in a limited way. And we observed many things, but there was one thing that stood up over the years or over the, over a year and a half, is that our people, the people of Grenada, were fed up with tribalism. And after many years of fighting each other, the people wanted a change in the approach of our parties. But the most important reason for the decision that we took about our membership of the LNP is the new approach of the LNP and its leader, Dr. Keith Mitchell, to the governance of our country. You know, brothers and sisters, the gentleman who introduced my dear sister, but then spoke about the mark of a good and effective leader. And I agree with it because I have always said that a good leader, an effective leader, is able to recognize the urgent needs of his country at a particular time. Dr. Mitchell, in my view, is such a leader. He recognized, he recognized that our people wanted a changed approach and that our country needed a changed approach. You know, the day after the elections 2013, the Prime Minister at his square lane, that is before he became Prime Minister, as Prime Minister-elect, he said, and I quote, "It is all of you that every Grenadian is a stakeholder in what we call Project Grenada." Prime Minister Mitchell said that the day he was sworn in as Prime Minister. This is the day, brothers and sisters, that he won fifteen seats for the second time in our history and was being sworn in as Prime Minister for the fourth time. He's talking about Project Grenada. But this did not happen in isolation. And I'm saying this to place in context why I believe that the LNP is the best vehicle to take this country forward. This did not happen in isolation. I recall, and I said this to the Prime Minister, I recall somewhere, I think it was two eleven or two twelve, in a budget debate, it was around the death of Georges Breyzner. And the Prime Minister addressed the Parliament at the time he was opposition leader. And he spoke extensively. He spoke about the need for reconciliation. He spoke about the need for forgiveness. He said that those he may have wronged persons, and he asked for their forgiveness. And he has forgiven himself those who may have wronged him. And that day, I listened intently to the Prime Minister. I think I listened to every single word. And I spoke to him right after he spoke. We went outside of the Parliament. And I remember saying to the Prime Minister, "Are you serious about what you just said?" Because that got my attention. I said, "Are you serious about what you say about the development of our country and the need for unity?" And he said, "Peter", because at the time Georges Breyzner had just died, he had been buried yet. He said, "We are all going to go that way. We need to fix Grenada before we go." It is my view, brothers and sisters, that Dr. Mitchell, like all of us, he has evolved because we all evolve based on our experiences. And it is my view that he evolved to a certain position based on his own experience in the politics. Remember the time he was defeated in 2008? And I expect that, like all of us, when we face positions like that, we reflect. And it was my view that upon his own reflection, he will speak for himself on the issue, that he evolved to a new place. Then came the national elections. Because all during the campaign, Dr. Mitchell spoke about the need for reconciliation and unity and all of that. But you know, politicians can say one thing, but when they reach there, they say another thing. So any listener to our politician, you kind of have to be careful. So of course, Prime Minister Mitchell spoke a lot about unity and forgiveness. But you know, the election came around and I said to myself, "Let's see if this Prime Minister is serious." The evening, the evening of the election victory, I went to Tantin and stood there particularly to listen to what the Prime Minister had to say. Because he could have gone two ways. He could have said, "Listen, I win fifteen, I pick on Bar, but I don't need nobody." Or he could be humble, he could be magnanimous and he could ask for that message that he spoke out to be continued into governance. Prime Minister Mitchell said at that time that he asked God, Almighty God, what it is he did to deserve a second chance. And that was significant. Because here was a man who was saying that he's receiving a second chance and that second chance came through the intervention of Almighty God. And he went on to say something further. He said, "We must work together, all of us. And we must work with people like Chester Humphrey and Madonna Ha." But well, you know the issue of Chester Humphrey and Keith Mitchell. But here's a Prime Minister who just won fifteen seats, has become Prime Minister for the fourth time and he's reaching out to people who are his combatants in the period up to that. But not only did he reach out on that night, since that day, it is all of you that the Prime Minister has had an inclusive approach to governance. And that approach is not only an approach that he's taken publicly. Because I attended as a guest several months ago, I think it was earlier this year, the convention of the LNP. And in a closed session, there was some ambassadors present, but the delegates of the LNP, Prime Minister Mitchell, as political leader, admonished his own party to approach the governance of our country in an inclusive way. He said to them that many of you are saying this is LNP time, but it's not LNP time, it's Grenada time. And that was necessary, that Prime Minister Mitchell gave to his whole people. So he wasn't coming outside to us with one message and going to his people with another message. The message that he carried of unity, of reconciliation, of forgiveness, of Project Grenada, is a message that he has been consistently advocating both inside and outside of the LNP. Brothers and sisters, through all the battles that we fought for the LNP, I must say that it has maintained what we call its working class credentials. It is all of you that the party in many of its programs has continued to be a serious ray of hope for the poor and the disenfranchised. And since taking office, not only has the Prime Minister spoken these words, but he has acted in that way. Prime Minister Mitchell, with respect to the trade union movement, has met with the unions more times in one year than the previous government met in all of its four and a half years in government. The LNP government is the one that has paid salary increases to workers at a time when other governments in the region are finding it difficult to do that. In addition to that, this government has paid three or four charges in back pay for workers. Brothers and sisters, additionally, the Prime Minister and this government has removed income tax on severance pay, blessing thousands of dollars in the hands of unfortunate workers for lost jobs in cable and wireless, in RBT, postcard and several other places. The LNP has moved speedily to implement a national insurance scheme, something that will benefit the poor people of our country. So brothers and sisters, it is clear, abundantly clear, as we say in courts, it is belusively clear that this government has kept working people at its focus in spite of all of the challenges facing us at this time. Brothers and sisters, in addition, this government has had a very progressive approach to foreign policy, establishing relations with new countries while maintaining relations with our old traditional allies. This government has done things with governments internationally that the previous government was afraid to do. This government has been bold, it has been progressive. Brothers and sisters, I have therefore come to the view that this call made by the Prime Minister to work together must be answered. And it must be answered by all of us who are interested in building Grenada. Of course, of course, brothers and sisters, I know that there will be people who will oppose it. Of course, there will be those who for their own narrow political objectives would oppose a call for national unity. Brothers and sisters, that is part of our political discourse. But as I say to them, those who want to continue to fight, take a corner, have your fight. Those of us who want to build Grenada, let us build Grenada together for our children and grandchildren. We believe, brothers and sisters, that in this era, this era of difficulty, our nation calls on us, as I said last week, to beat our swords into plowshares and our spares into pruning hooks. We are faced with new challenges. We need new approaches. This clarion call for unity must not go unanswered. The economic challenges facing this country, facing our country, are too huge. The times are too critical for us to retreat in what we are used to, which is a tribal war between each other. Brothers and sisters, of course, there are those who enjoy. They enjoy the tribal war. To them, in their own comfort, they take pleasure in attacking. They take pleasure in demonizing. They do not care about our country. Those of us who care must work together because I tell you, all of us, all of us, brothers and sisters, want the same things. You need jobs for your children. You need healthcare for your parents. You need housing for your family. And it matters not whether or not you're LNP, LDC, ELP, anywhere. Those are the things we need and those are the things we should fight for. Brothers and sisters, to even begin to address these issues cause for unprecedented levels of unity such that we've never seen in our country. Brothers and sisters, there are many of us who will easily remember the battles of the past. But as I said earlier this last week, and I quote, "What a lifetime in politics has taught me is that it is easier to demonize your opponents than to build positive structures in our country." But this very life in politics has also taught me that there is no need to take the easy road to political division and national destruction. We need to take the tougher road with conviction, discipline and resolve, understanding that we must come together to fight in common cause. Brothers and sisters, one does not have to be a member of the LNP to be part of the Project Grenada. Project Grenada is about building Grenada. I chose that path and many of us will choose the path of joining a political party. But wherever you are, in your community, in your churches, in your diaspora groups, the call has gone out to unite, to build Grenada. And we must answer that call. I just want to end by quoting a dear friend of mine, Dr. Terry Miroshu, writing in a I just want to end by quoting a dear friend of mine, Dr Terry Marisho, writing an article last week in The Informer. He said this, bear with me, I'll conclude. So all the bitter and vitriolic comments that one hears, and this is Dr Marisho writing, so all the bitter and vitriolic comments that one hears about Dr Mitchell does not change the fact that he has been the most successful and popular leader since 1983, whether we like it or not. And he's speaking about my entreaty to the NMP says. So if one chooses to join his party, there is absolutely no shame in doing so because the people, because the people want his party, the NMP, NMP, and him, Dr Mitchell, to continue to provide leadership that seems lacking of other major parties. Mr Marisho was on to say, Dr Marisho, Peter is speaking a lot about Project Grenada, which seeks to put Grenada first and an end to the political divide and the tribalism that has affected this country for years. I personally have no problem with this control because we as a people have suffered too much in the past because of politics. The political bitterness, spite and hatred that still exists would be very difficult to eradicate because it is very much engraved in us as part of our cultural heritage. However, Dr Marisho concludes, if we can succeed in getting rid of the divisions and after an election, everyone rallies around the winning party and pitching to help, not for the sake of the party, but for the sake of the country, then there is nothing that can stop us from resolving the magnitude of problems that we face to develop this beautiful country of ours. It may sound idealistic to get people to change their attitudes and line up behind Project Grenada or any other project that seeks to unify the Grenadian people around the common goal of development. But he concludes, no more than ever, we need more unity and patriotism because the challenges facing us as a people would be insurmountable if we continue on this present path. No one political party has all the answers, but collectively, as a people, we have already demonstrated that that innate capacity and resilience to resolve our problems and we can do it again if we try. Brothers and sisters, I urge you this evening to answer the call of Dr Mitchell, to answer the call of the NMP, to answer the call of the people of Grenada, to come together, to work together, to build Grenada. We are facing difficult times, but if we face difficult times, we can resolve these difficulties if we work together because united we stand.
Put your hands together again for Mr Peter David. Also eloquently reminded us that united we stand, united before. I'm going to call now Miss Marlin Bedore to introduce to us the next speaker, who will be the Honourable Elvin Nimrod, who is Minister of Legal Affairs and Labour. We will now wait for the introduction of the next speaker.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure that I introduce this next speaker. Elvin Chin Nimrod was born and raised in the island of Caracoo. He received his primary education at the Hillsborough Government School in Caracoo and later attended the Grenada Boys Secondary School. After completing his education at the Grenada Boys Secondary School, he returned to dependency where he embarked upon teaching a career at the Mount Pleasant Government School in Caracoo. In pursuit of higher learning, Elvin migrated to the United States of America where he achieved his academic and professional goals. He attended Brooklyn College in New York and received a Bachelor's of Science degree in Political Science. He later attended the John J College of Criminal Justice where he obtained a Master's of Arts degree in Criminal Justice. He culminated his academic pursuits by attending New York Law School where he obtained his Jurisprudence Doctorate in Law. Following his graduation from law school, he was admitted to practice through the membership in New York Bar Association. Mr Nimrod attended, entered into private practice and became a senior partner in the love form of Nimrod and Tucker. Through his practice in the city of New York, he specialized in immigration and real estate law. As a dedicated and committed Grenadian who upholds the principle of civic participation, he served as honorary legal counsel to the permanent mission of Grenada at the United Nations on a pro bono basis. In his continued effort to pursue the part of civic engagement, in 1991, he gave up law practice in New York and returned to Grenada. Shortly after, he attended the Hugh Wunning Law School in Trinidad where he received a legal education certificate and was later admitted to practice law in the Supreme Court of Grenada. In 1995, Nimrod entered the political arena and selected the constituency of Caracoo Pity Martinique to launch his political career. Two years later, he was appointed to Grenada Senate. In January 1999, he was elected on a new national party, the NMP, which is the best one, of course. And became parliamentary representative of the constituency of Caracoo Pity Martinique. He joined the Mitchell Cabinet and was assigned portfolio of Minister of Legal Affairs, Labour, Local Government of Caracoo Pity Martinique Affairs. He was later assigned additional portfolios, which included Minister of Foreign Affairs, International Trade, Attorney General. He also served as Leader of Government Business in the lower house. He has held several senior party positions, including a stint as Chairperson and currently hold the position of Deputy Leader of the New National Party. Honourable Elvin Nimrod was appointed Grenada Deputy Prime Minister following the February 213 elections. He is also Minister of Legal Affairs, Labour, Local Government, Caracoo and Pity Martinique Affairs. And now I am extremely proud and honoured to introduce to you my cousin, my friend, my ally, Honourable Elvin Nimrod.
Thank you, thank you very much. My dear friend and cousin Marlin, Dr Radoan of Kif Mitchell, Prime Minister of Grenada, Caracoo and Pity Martinique, Honourable Clarence Mother Scowen, Minister of Health. And of course, we do have Ambassador to the United Nations, Ambassador Dennis Antoine, Ambassador Derek James, my good friend, Peter Charles David, other distinguished members on the head table, and of course, you people present here this evening. Let me say a pleasant good evening to each and every one of you. And let me say how pleased and excited I am to be part in your presence once more. Many of you will know that my political ambitions and aspirations was born right here in New York, was nurtured in New York, and of course, barefoot in New York. I want to say thanks to all of you who have contributed towards my success in politics and otherwise. I know that you will understand when I say a special thanks to the Elvin Nimrod Support Group that had begun my political career and also to the umbrella NMP New York Support Group, and most of all, to all the people in particular, the people of Caracoo and Pity Martinique, who have elected me for four consecutive terms to represent them in the House of Parliament. My dear friends, there are some of the tractors are wondering whether or not they would want again. And I said to them, the guy who first asked that question to God, them, the people of Caracoo and Pity Martinique, them, the Prime Minister, and leave me out of it. My dear friends, on February 19th, 2013, the people of Grenada, Caracoo and Pity Martinique spoke in clear and unequivocal, unambiguous terms by electing the new national party overwhelmingly to represent their interests. They were clear on their wishes and their desires, and they gave us fifteen seats as the tools to implement their wishes. My friends, the people were clear, they wanted unity, they wanted democracy, they wanted economic development, and they wanted good leadership among other things. And so, of course, the NMP has taken the instructions from the people and attempted to satisfy their desire and their needs. And so the unity, of course, my friends, was clearly demonstrated by the act of the Prime Minister and other members of the New National Party in welcoming my good friend, Peter David, into the House unconditionally, my friends. And of course, the parliamentary democracy of which the people are very, very concerned because if you remember, for six months, the parliament was closed and they did not have the means to address their own grievances. And this is why they believed that the New National Party would have restored democracy to our country. And today, this government is making sure that the parliament is open on a regular basis. And you know what? Even the embassy had not one single seat, we have three embassy sitting in the Senate. If that is not democracy, my friends, I do not know what else is democracy. For economic development, we have inherited a very, very serious economic problem. In addition to the world crisis, my friends, we met someone to call homegrown crisis because we did not complain as previous governments, we did not cry, we did not say that the treasury was empty, even if there was no money in treasury, because we realized our obligation. We know that we asked you to vote for us, to support us, and that we will remedy things. And so we move on straight, we realize in our obligations. As one speaker said before, governance and government is a continuum. When you're going down, you cannot cry and complain, you have to try to remedy things. And that is exactly what we did. So despite all the problems that this government faced, we were able to continue to pay salary and pay salary on time. As one speaker mentioned, we were able to pay back pay that was not negotiated by this government, but by the government that realized that they were losing an election and so they did not care what action to take and who would have to face the fire. But we stood up and we met that obligation, my friends. We've created employment. One of the speaker talked about the Imani Programme, where we have employed thousands of youngsters because the Prime Minister would tell you, when the youngsters came and they look into your eyes and you look into their eyes, you realize they were desperate. We have an obligation to make sure that our young people get an opportunity. And so this is what we are doing, my friends. And we campaign, we campaign on a new economic development project. We said we want a new economy, and so we moved directly ahead to create a new economy. Now, we have paid large outstanding bills regionally and internationally. We met millions of dollars of dollars in unpaid claims in the treasury. And we continue to pay that down, my friends, without complaining about anything. And this is why this evening, we are standing here tall and proud to know that we are handling the people's business the way the people want us to handle the business. My friends, it is not easy. You have heard and you will continue to hear about a call for sacrifices. All of us shed sacrifices because if we do not do so, the alternative is very bleak. We don't want to go far to countries, we have promised, we have promised our people that we will not lay them off. We promise that we will not lay off any single servant. But of course, in order to keep that promise, we have to make other sacrifices. And we talk about the taxes, which the Prime Minister will talk about later on. But my friends, it was not easy, as I said in parliament a couple of days ago. When I sit down around the table and when we have to make the decisions that will affect our people in terms of taxes, we look at each other's faces and everyone there look as if they are about to do some kind of a root canal in the dental chair. Because we feel the pain and we are humble about this, we are not arrogant, we feel the pain, but we know the better days are coming. And we also know that very soon, we will be able to help adjust, of course, those measures that we have taken and that we know that in a sense are very difficult for our people to meet. My friends, another thing that this people, the people of Grenada, Caracoo and Pity Martinique voted for was for good leadership. Because they are ashamed of the indecisiveness and poor leadership that existed prior to this government. And my friends, I want to say, and as someone mentioned before, that this Prime Minister, we are trying to boost him up in any way, is the best Grenada I've ever seen and I'm sure, the best Grenada we've seen. My friends, I want to talk to you about the ministries under my watch. I want to talk about Ministry of Legal Affairs, that is very important, and about our legislative agenda as a government. We have decided that it's time to change our constitution, to amend certain sections of our constitution. You know, our constitution was handed down to us in 1974 for independence, and our people never had the opportunity to have any kind of input in our constitution. And much has happened in the forty years since independence, much has changed, and we have to make sure we live up to the present day sense of governance, human rights, another very important aspects. And so, we are covering the constitution to see what measures we should take to bring it up to standard with modern day living. We have, for instance, identified the CCJ, the Caribbean Court of Justice. That's one of the items the Constitutional Reform Commission is looking at. In other words, our final court of appeal, as it is right now, is the Premier Council. our final court of appeal as it is right now is the Privy Council in England. The Privy Council makes final decision for us and we have to live with it, even if they might not understand our social and cultural heritage. And we are saying, we think it's time for our own court to handle our destiny. And this is why this is one of the provisions that we want to reform so that Grenada can join the appellate division of the CCJ. There are much have been said because some of our people are saying they do not have faith in Caribbean justice, that they afraid there will be political interference. They didn't think that we competent to do it. But my friends, those are not the reasons. Those are just excuses. Because I want to say to you that the Privy Council is telling us in many ways that it is time for us to get our own wings to fly. It is time for us to move on. They are tired of us. And I can tell you that the Caribbean has some of the best justices that I know in the world. And in terms of political interference, it will be such that there will be no, there will be no opportunity for any politician to interfere. So I am saying that we have an obligation and a responsibility to make sure our country move on to the Caribbean Court of Justice so we can determine our own destiny. The other thing, of course, you know, today according to our constitution, we have a supervisor election. And so, the one person that has that awesome responsibility of dealing with the internal affairs. And of course, we believe that as other regional states, it would be good for us to have a constitutional commission where several sectors of our society would be represented. And so, then no one would be pointing fingers at any single individual because we have a commission. My friends, there is another very important aspect that we are looking at. This one, I know is very dear and near to me and very dear and near to the people of Caracu and Pedemani. And that is the insertion of the name of Caracu and Pedemani on our national passport. I can see the reason why not. I see the reason why not. And we have some presidents. We have right around us, straight down to Lagos and Bissau, Benidorm, Antigua, Barbuda, Guimaraes, Great Britain, Northern Ireland. What is the reason that we cannot insert Caracu and Pedemani on our passport? I have seen everything for this. Another agenda on our legislative plan, my friends, is curing land title. You know, in Grenada, Caracu, and Pedemani, we have a serious problem with land title. People die and they leave the land behind. Some kept it for the friends and the relatives. And they say, well, you could build anywhere you want. Don't worry. Nobody will bother you. Only to find out when you start building, 10 persons came out from the woodworks and say, this is my fatherland. This is my fatherland. And I have a deed for it. We want to make sure that we create that legal framework so that you will have clean and clear title to your property. This is another very important aspect we are handling in legal affairs. My friends, and for those of us here from Caracu and Pedemani, I want to say this to you, and the evidence is all around us. Since the New National Party took government in 1995, to this very present day, Caracu and Pedemani has never had it so good. This government, in the past, the NMP and the present NMP, made sure that they kept Caracu abreast in terms of progress. Just about everything done in Mayland Grenada has been done in Caracu. Infrastructure development, education, social services, everything is done. And I want to say thanks to the Prime Minister Michael Ait for always standing with us very high to make sure Caracu get his fair share. We have a package for Caracu right now, a very big package, that will transform Caracu and Pedemani forever. We started with transportation. The government has entered into an agreement with a Chinese company to build an airport at La Rista. We know right now we are challenged with transportation. At any one point, because the plane is so small, the plane that travels from Caracu to Grenada and from Grenada to Caracu, at any one point, there are no seats. And then we have problems with the earthquake. And so, transportation is a mess. We cannot hope to develop our country or try and state. We are making sure we fix the transportation problem. And this is why, my friends, that the government is making sure to push it forward that very soon, very soon, we will have a brand new airport in Caracu coming up. And then we have something else that is quite important. Many of us know the problem that we face in terms of inadequate water supply. It happens throughout the state of Grenada, Caracu, and Pedemani. But of course, it's much more intense in Caracu over the years. And even quite recently, I ran out of water. I had to bathe in a bucket as anybody else. But the days for this would be soon over. Because the European Union has funded a project, All the Five Seas, Reverse Osmosis, whereby water in adequate supply would be Caracu and Pedemani pumped and piped to the homes of everyone. But we want to say this, every privilege, every benefit has a responsibility. And I know there is a mindset that water is God's water, and so you shouldn't pay for it. But we expect that everyone will be willing to pay something to make sure that they get adequate water supply. And so, I am calling all of us to make sure that when the time comes, we do the right thing and decide to pay so that we can have water supply. In addition, the jetty in Hillsborough has outlived its usefulness. As a matter of fact, it's quite dangerous and of course needs, not only repair, but it needs to be demolished completely. And so, the intent, and of course, we already commenced preliminary works, is to bring the present jetty from Harveville at Tyrell Bay in Harveville, present jetty from Hillsborough at Tyrell Bay in Harveville. But we are also mindful that we do not want Hillsborough to become a ghost town. So we are calling upon everyone, including some foreign investors, to make sure that we do some activities in Hillsborough so that we will not have any problem in terms of keeping the town alive. You also remember that the New National Party administration, after many years of requests, had decided to allot some lands to people in Caracu and Pedemani. When the NDC administration came in for some spite and other reasons, they took back the land. On December 2nd of 2013, the NMP administration decided to return the land to all the people that had this land assigned to them. And so, persons who did not have lands, did not, were unable to erect a shelter can now be hopeful that that would happen. And I also want to say that we have negotiated 2,000 houses from the Chinese. The last government, the NDC government, found it was too much for Caracu and Grenada. So they gave back 1,000 to the Chinese. So we went back and renegotiated again. So these houses are common. Some already been in Mayland Grenada, and the people of Caracu and Pedemani would get their share of housing. What else could we ask for, my friends? What else could we ask for? And on the national front, on the national front itself, your government is working and working very hard to make life better for all of its citizens. Listen, mate, all of us, all of us, those of us at home, you here in the diaspora, we have a responsibility to help make our country a better place. And talking about the diaspora, you have been playing and I know you are playing a very integral part, a very integral role in building our country. We know that you've made tremendous sacrifices. I know personally of persons who have taken money from the mortgage payment to send to help in Grenada when we had the crisis in terms of the hurricane. Diaspora, we love you. We value your support. We value your contribution. So much so that we have recently appointed an ambassador in the person of Honorable Derek James to be ambassador of Diaspora Affairs. We have also had and continue to stock up an office in Grenada, a Diaspora Office in Grenada, and we would fully staff that office very soon so that there would be interaction between the Diaspora and of course Grenada. So we can never forget your importance in nation building. And we want you to know this, and we want you to continue to help us in whatever way possible. Because remember, at the end of the day, each of us, each of us has an obligation to see our country a better place. And we want to work together, work together, and to make sure that Grenada, Caracu, and Pedemani is the best that it can be. But most of all, we want you to answer the call of unity. Too much invited, and the last government paid a big price for this. They paid a price because the people was tired of fighting and the fighting and the fussing and the carrying on between and among all of these people. And this is why the people say enough is enough. And I want you to know, and we are very conscious, that we are not immune. Because the people are looking at us also. And if we do the same thing, they could do the same thing back to us. And this is why this government is so humble. We have 15 seats. We could be arrogant about it, but we are very humble. When we bring a piece of legislation and some group or some individual say to us that they have a problem with that, we would put it back for now and then we'll go reexamine and go back to Parliament. We had what you call electronic crime bill. Would we believe it was a good piece of legislation? Because it was to protect society from unscrupulous people that would go on the internet and put very demeaning and derogative statement on the internet about others. We thought that was wrong. They would exploit young children. We thought that was wrong. And we moved to Canada. But then the people were saying, the media was saying that we were infringing on the right of free speech, etc., etc. And so, we went back and we had a second look of it. And then we adjusted to suit. The point they're making is, we not saying we have 15 seats and we don't care. We have 15 seats that we had before. But we are using power very judiciously. We are using power in such a way that we are not abusing it. And the people of Grenada, Caracu, and Pedemani, they respect us for this. So we not rewarding anyone. We are making sure that everyone has a say in whatever we do. So my friends, this evening, I want to say to each of you that you are very important to us. I want to repeat that again and again. That you have an obligation to help build your country, all of us. Because when you would have left this world, when you would have left this world, you want to make sure that something good read to say that I paid my part, that I made my own contribution to the building of my dear land, Grenada, Caracu, and Pedemani. I thank you very much.
Put your hands together again, brothers and sisters. Speech is given. Our deputy prime minister. All of question or any rebuttals because again of time constraints. So when you come and you ask a question, we're asking you to kindly be patient with us. In case you're tempted to ask a second question, just be patient with us and understand that it is only one question you will be able to ask. I ask you now to take a deep breath, hold it for three seconds. Exhale, feel refreshed, because the time you have waited for is now. And we want to make sure that you feel energetic and you're able to sit upright and listen to the high point of this session. Because now I'm going to ask His Excellency Dennis G. Antoine, Ambassador and prominent representative of Grenada to the United Nations, to come now and introduce to us brothers and sisters, Dr. The Right Honorable Keith Mitchell, Prime Minister of Grenada, Caracu, and Pedemani.
Good evening, everyone. Honorable members of the House of Parliament from Grenada and other representatives that they had platform that has been mentioned. I want to recognize representatives from US, federal, state, and local government present. Also, members of the Diplomatic and Counselor Corps, leaders of the Canadian and Caribbean organizations, special invited guests, Caribbean and American nationals, friends of Grenada, and my sisters and brothers from Grenada, Caracu, and Pedemani. All, take this opportunity to bring your greetings. First, from the staff of the prominent mission of Grenada, representing Grenada here at the United Nations, present also in the audience. I hope you would meet the staff and learn who they are. I have a very singular and special honor to reintroduce to some and to introduce to many an honorable man. Born on the 12th of November to the late Dowling and still vibrant Catherine Mitchell, they gave Grenada and the Caribbean an extraordinary stand. He began his preparation at Happy Hill Aris School, J.W. Fletcher Memorial School, Presentation Boys College. And he went from Happy Hill to Cave Hill, where he learned a Bachelor of Science in Mathematics and Chemistry from our University of the West Indies. Then on to Washington DC where I met Dr. Mitchell. There, he earned a Master's Degree from Howard University and a Doctorate Degree in Mathematics and Statistics from the American University. Today, he's an accomplished and experienced astute Canadian and Caribbean leader. He has grown to be the modern father of our nation, a defender of the poor and the dispossessed, and a motivator and friend of the business class, and our champion for national unity. He's a model for healthy living. He exudes character, scholarship, stewardship, and he promotes fitness for life. He's an example. Ladies and gentlemen, in 1983, Dr. Mitchell left Washington DC as a ten-year professor of mathematics at Howard University and at the height of successful business practice and returned to contribute to Grenada's rebuilding process. In 1984, Dr. Mitchell was elected to the Member, as Member of Parliament for St. George's North West. And he successfully contested this seat and won each time. During the, during his early years as a politician, Dr. Mitchell's portfolio included, as you recall, communications and works, public utilities, even his distractors will agree. recall, communications and works, public utilities, even his distractors will agree that he transformed Grenada's infrastructural landscape and rural areas. Many of the villages received water, telephone, and paved roads for the first time. Dr. Mitchell was elected leader of the New National Party in nineteen eighty-nine and successfully led the party into victory in nineteen ninety-five, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand and three, and recently in two thousand and thirteen. History will record that the NMPM, Keith Mitchell, is the only political party in the Caribbean that made a clean sweep of the polls, winning every single parliamentary seat in two elections, nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and thirteen. Dr. Mitchell is an accomplished team leader, demonstrated not only in politics, but in the sport of cricket, community development, stressing that wherever God places you, you have a responsibility to make a difference. Dr. Mitchell was made captain of the Windward Islands and the Leeward Islands Youth Cricket Team in nineteen seventy-three, but more than party leadership, Dr. Mitchell has demonstrated decisive leadership in government. For example, in the wake of Hurricane Ivan's severe devastation of Grenada in two thousand and four, it was the steady leadership of Prime Minister Keith Mitchell and his team, drawing upon the assistance of OICs Caricom Neighbours, and engaging the international community. He led a passionate, successful recovery drive to build back Grenada better. Prime Minister Mitchell is not only a nationalist, he believes in originalism. Of course, his Bavarian wife bears testimony to this. He believes, in his capacity as Prime Minister, Dr. Mitchell served as chairman of the community. He was also chairman of the Board of Governors for the Caribbean Development Bank, the Ministerial Council of the Associate States for the Caribbean, chairman of the OICs, longstanding chairman of the regional security system, the longest-serving chairman of the regional security system. Prime Minister Mitchell was also instrumental in leading our regional team to resolve internal disputes in Guyana. In his capacity as chairman of Caricom Subcommittee on Cricket, he demonstrated regional leadership during some of the most fragile moments in West Indian cricket. And with responsibility for science and technology for Caricom, Grenada spearheaded the Caribbean Knowledge and Learning Network led by Prime Minister Mitchell. Now globally, under his leadership, the United Nations has recognized Grenada as leading globally to have more than thirty percent elected women to serve in parliament. And he has appointed yet another woman as head of state, Dame Zil Levenard, a prominent and successful Canadian businesswoman, now our first governor general. Today, today, Prime Minister Mitchell co-chairs the Global Island Partnership and leads Grenada and this mechanism for advancing conservation and island biodiversity to challenge and offset the impacts of climate change. Ladies and gentlemen, he has and continues to serve Grenada, Caracol, Pedemati, and the Caribbean region with vision and distinction, and he boldly looks ahead, fashioning a new sustainable economy for Grenada. Please join me, ladies and gentlemen, in bringing to the podium Dr. The Right Honorable
Thank you, thank you, Dennis Antoine. I want to go, one man, we're talking about. To the Deputy Prime Minister of our beloved country, my dear brother and brother, to my sister and Minister of Health and Parliament Representative for St. Arts, to my brother, Peter, former Foreign Minister of our country, and now the newest member of the new national Our two distinguished ambassadors, Dennis Antoine and Derek James, and all the persons who did the presentation today, I want to welcome all of you. And I just want to recognize a very good friend, almost a family friend, Judge Raditz, and her husband, and think her family. And she happens to have been a very close friend, she's also godmother of my only son. So we recognize her, distinguished member of the Supreme Court of the State of New York here this evening. And to the distinguished members of the diplomatic community, all of you here, friends, brothers and sisters all, of course, this is indeed a very special occasion. I want to tell you why we're here at this time. It's been almost sixteen months since the new government was elected, and we have had a big task of attempting to put the country on fiscal stability and economic growth. That, of course, has prevented us from doing a lot of travel, but we also know the importance of the Diaspora community, and therefore, we decided before the summer breaks, in any true sense, that we must do it and make the sacrifice. We felt we have to come here and bring you up to the details to what's taking place in our country, and I'm sure you've got a lot of food for thought already. We also want to make sure that you understand that our government appreciates the commitment of our Diaspora community, and that we want to see more and more of that correlation between those of you abroad in several cities, and of course, our country citizens at home. And this trip, we can't stay too long, so therefore, we decided three areas to cover. It's going to be New York, Montreal, Toronto, and later in the summer, we'll take on Miami, Washington, and of course, we can't forget lots of our citizens in Trinidad and Tobago. So friends, at the end of this, I really want you to take this opportunity to give us feedback. One thing I value, and we value, is the comments, suggestions, and even criticism of our people. Because we believe that if you genuinely care, you are not to be afraid of any criticism from the citizens who you serve. In other words, even when a question may not be appropriate, it is still good to be asked, because it gives us a chance to deal with appropriate question in the appropriate way. My dear sisters and brothers, we firmly believe in the issue of Project Grenada. We firmly believe that, and as one of our colleagues on the platform said today, we are not only talking the talk, but we are going to walk the talk. Sisters and brothers, it is said that sometimes the best way you get to appreciate issues that are confronting you in any situation, whether it's business, sports, particularly in the case of politics, is sometimes to step back and look in from outside. I really believe that. In fact, I advise some of my colleagues, don't fight to win elections too often. Take a chance to step out and look in, because I was, I have valuable experience sitting in opposition and watching our country from outside, government. My dear sisters and brothers, therefore, when the election came in two thousand and fifteen, and the results was clearly a massive one, we expected the results to be strong, but it was even stronger than our expectation. And therefore, it was easy, friends, for us to knock our chest, and to say that is our time. It was easy for us to become arrogant, but I've always reminded sisters and brothers that power is only appropriate when those who have it know how to use it discretionately. Remember that, sisters and brothers, and not only talking politics, any area of responsibility. If you have power and you do not use it appropriately, you are doing more damage than good to And therefore, in the night of the election, when the results came in, and as Peter already pointed out, the campaign and how much the message was consistent about bringing all forces together, I have an experience that I will never be able to forget. As I stood on the stage, there were thousands of people in that audience, I've never seen a crowd like this in Grenada, and that was spontaneous. And in front of the stage, there were hundreds of young people, boys and girls, and they were like right there in front of me, and their faces was stuck, and ice stuck on me. And it was then, sisters and brothers, I said to them, I said, "Lord, what trouble you put me in there?" It was clear that they were saying to me something like, "Papa, save me." That's what I saw. What came upon me then, sisters and brothers, was, "I can't do this by myself, I cannot do this with just those who are elected with me on the stage then." So I said, I remember I had a lot of fights with the trade union movement leadership in the period ninety-five to two thousand, and it, even with business, community, with NGOs, and with even the churches. And I said to myself, for, for us to succeed in changing what is happening to our country and bringing hope to those young people and to the country as a whole, we need everybody on board with Project Grenada, everybody. And I said, if you don't have the trade union, at least understanding the responsibility and working with government, we cannot succeed. It was then, I called, spontaneously, sisters and brothers, was not part of my speech. Spontaneously, I called and brought a chest down for him, and Sister Madano Haford, who was then and still is the president of the Trade Union Council, and said, "Join me in Project Grenada. Join me in bringing hope to the people of Grenada, Caracol, and Pedemati." And since then, sisters and brothers, we have met together every month. This is the first month we will not be meeting because I'm traveling at the end of the month, as I did. We meet together as leaders of the trade union movement, leaders of the business community, leaders of the non-governmental community, and the leadership of the churches in the country, and the government, in a meeting chaired by myself as Prime Minister, and I have not missed one meeting so far when I'm in the country, to discuss the present situation, to share ideas, to even agree to disagree, but fundamentally, to plan for Project Grenada, to plan to develop Grenada, Caracol, and Pedemati. I am proud, sisters and brothers, as I travel around the region, and up to recently coming from a major meeting in Mexico, where many of my colleagues, Prime Ministers, Jamaica, Bahamas, Trinidad, Tobago, and I was coming back on a private plane, and some of my colleagues said to me, "I don't know how you're doing, but what you're doing in Grenada, we hope we'll want to do the same thing, to have that concerted process of engagement between all parties in our country." That, sisters and brothers, is selling beautifully around the region and around the world, that the government recognizes that the only way to go forward is to bring all the players together on Project That Country. So we have to do that, sisters and brothers. We have to take that to the Caribbean region. We cannot continue with little Grenada myself. We cannot continue with little Saint Vincent myself. We cannot continue with all the problems that exist by going on our own, sisters and brothers, even the platform of information and communication technology. If we use that platform, and we come up with one serious program, use of, for use of that platform to develop the region, it can place the Caribbean region in serious competition and the global market. I have no doubt in my mind, so we're not talking, not just Project Grenada, it has also been Project Caribbean, sisters and brothers, but we have to set lower in Grenada first and foremost. My sisters and brothers, what is the state of your country? You must tell it. Sister Tarris and others gave you some of the things that were happening when we came in the government. It is not no secret, and I don't want to spend time, because we have not done so, because I think it's important. I think we politicians make a lot of mistakes, because we like, we believe in ourselves too much, and we forget the people are the ones who put us there. When our election is over, it's not about us, it's about people. We have to always get it right. And sometimes we spend all our time vilifying our opponent, as weak as they may be, or as incorrect as they may have been in government, spending all your energies and attacking them will not solve the problem confronting you and your country. I believe one of the reasons that we're here today is because of something I know happened very early. I remember after the election in two thousand and eight, the energies in the government were all spent on Keith Mitchell. I'd never forget that. They have to jail Keith Mitchell, they have to remove him from the state. So I say, "Wait, no, you jail Keith Mitchell, you still have a problem." So I remember going to parliament one day, and Peter will remember this, and I said to them after about three or four months. And I said to them after about three or four months, I said, "You know, during election days, you call me Jonah, Peter and him, you call me Jonah." Jonah got up in parliament. And Jonah said to the prime minister on his team on the other side, "All spending all your time trying to jail Keith Mitchell. You spend all your time vilifying, remember your quote there, to improve the lives of the people. But I can tell you this, you will not succeed. But more than that, within a year and a half, when the people cannot see an improvement in their lives, they will come next to the wheel. Jonah, Jonah, wake up." I had the whole parliament laughing. But I was a serious thing, man. And I'm telling you what, I think Peter understood this. And because he was a voice for saying, "Let us get on with the work of the government. Let us build the lives of the people. Forget Keith Mitchell, he's now in opposition. We succeed in getting rid of him politically in government. Our task now is to build the country." For that, I believe, he endured the wrath of the prime minister. In my view, he was very simple minded and one dimensional, together with his chief supporter, who then the minister of finance, whose only rule in government seemed to be just attack and attack and vilify people, not to do benefits and bring benefits to the people of the country. I am telling you, therefore, the NMP is the beneficiary of Peter's one experience and ability because of the type of politics that was practiced between the National Democratic Congress. So we welcome Peter on board for one thing, sisters and brothers, I've said over and over. I am not in this, let Peter join, just join NMP or Peter join Keith Mitchell. This is not easy, you know. As far as I'm concerned, Peter decided to join the people of Grenada, Caracu and PT Martin. So if the NMP and Keith Mitchell and others are not doing what it's supposed to do, he has a right to take alternatively. Because it's not about us, it's about Grenada, Caracu and PT Martin. We must constantly keep our eyes on the prize. And that prize is Grenada, Caracu and PT Martin. Too much time we stick on personalities who we like and we don't like. Something is right today because John did it. But it's wrong tomorrow because Lucy did, doing the same thing. It is not so, sisters and brothers. Wrong is wrong, right is always right, irregardless of the personalities in charge. We must get it right, sisters and brothers. So even in our own public service, I've said over and over to them, too many times I see decision made on the basis of who the person is and not on the principle. So someone is promoted because they are friend of either politician or somebody up in the system. When another person working the tail off will not get promotion because he's not a friend of that person or the politician. I say, "If it's one thing we will do for our country, the time we serve, we must lift the bar. We must lift the bar." Sisters and brothers, that is why. I've said it, and I want all my supporters to understand this. When I'm talking about this, it's deep inside of me. It is not a game for me. If I have to be out of government for it, then I will be a happy man. When we decided that Derek must remain as council general, it had nothing to do with just Derek. It had nothing to do with Peter David, as some people say. My dear sisters and brothers, the word came back from most people in the diaspora, including NMP supporters, that if you preach unity, if you preach it, coming together the forces, and you remove Derek, you'll be sending a wrong message for Project Grenada and the development of this beautiful country. Because I didn't know much about that. So it's not about personalities, my dear sisters and brothers. It is not about personalities. It's about country. And that's why I called all NMP supporters, "Put the label of the past behind our parties as a vehicle for the development of our country." It is not just a symbol for just association between friends or family. It's about our country. And we cannot, sisters and brothers, and I cannot follow. Those of us that cannot understand the message, we must get it right. Believe in Keith Mitchell cannot change and will not change on that particular matter. I would prefer to get out of politics before I participate in, in, in the politics of most spite and hate. I've watched it divide our country. I've seen how we have lost so much. I was there recently, and Peter was there in St. George's Northeast, Northwest constituency, pardon my constituency, in New Hampshire. A gentleman got up and started talking about how politicians making so much money and taxing people and blah, blah, blah. And I, I listened to the brother. I say, "You know something?" And I told to Peter, I said, "Look, we are guilty of this. We are part of the reason for our way we perceive politicians. We have been vilifying each other sufficiently." And I said to them, "Just look around in the history of Grenada. Just look around. All the attacks we have, we have labeled polit, political opponents have been corrupt, have been thieves and so on. Look and see how many prosperous former politician that is in Grenada, that are in Grenada today. Some in the grave, but they died as poppers. And we sometimes used to call them thieves." My sisters and brothers, don't stop that. Our children and grandchildren will not respect us and will be hurting our country more and more. I am not going to participate in this, and I want it to be long and clear. Particularly in this period of opportunity I get, I feel, I feel I am here for a particular reason, to right the wrongs of the past and move this country on one path. Sisters and brothers, we inherited a mess, and I'm not going to go through it. Sister Tara's gave you some of it. I go to the OICSAS meeting and they show me a book, Grenada, the worst, the most bad pay. Grenada chaired the OICSAS Prime Ministerial Committee. And while Grenada chairing, Grenada paying. So I asked, I asked one of the prime ministers, "Tell me something. When we owe this money, tell man, you should come to the meeting." He tells me, "Yes." I said, "Well, what you should say?" He said, "You just sit there." I liked him, he put up, "You just sit there." So he leave everything for me. Because I ask him, "I can't owe you. I want to sit on your house. I will feed man. Either I stay away or bring some money with me." But that's what it, the Caribbean Development Bank was downgraded twice. Those of you in the Caribbean know the importance of the Caribbean Development Bank because they access loans from the international community and lend to governments. So the higher the rating of the bank, the cheaper the loans to the individual countries. So when they got downgraded twice because of Grenada, it means that we cost the borrowing member countries in the Caribbean millions and hundreds and scores of millions of dollars because they now have to borrow at much higher rates. So when I came into government, I, the first week, I left for a meeting in Barbados, just for one evening. And the chairman of the Caribbean Development Bank said, "He just wanted to lunch with me." Poor me, I think his larger man wanted to have lunch. So I go, make myself ready for lunch. Lunch, lunch, and then he didn't eat lunch. Nearly, nearly had other things than lunch. They showed me a thing, and he said, "Look, next week, if you don't pay the $5.8 million to the bank, they will downgrade us at all time." Could we imagine? I have not even gone to the Ministry of Finance yet to find out the ways they sent. But that is what I was confronted with. I called the PS and I said, "Lord," I said, "we can't allow the bank to be downgraded again." So I said, "Call my friends. We have no money." So we called my good friend, Van Kamna, who says, "I said, 'Look, Van Kamna, you have to help me. Because Jamaica will get hurt, Ghana will get hurt, and Wills will get hurt because of Grenada again.'" And she helped us. So we were able to pay that and pay a number of countries. So that's why I always remember, sisters and brothers, in Trinidad and Tobago, because they saved us, and that's what Caribbean World is, is all about, sisters and brothers. So we had a fiscal problem. We, every month, the government was earning a certain amount for the country to do all work in the country. But the deficit between what we earned and what we pay out every month was $18 million. Try to run a business, and every month is a deficit. See how long you've been in business. So there's no way we can continue with this. Once then that, we are not able to service our debts, as I mentioned, I could give you all the debts that we owe and we couldn't pay. The debt of the country is over $1.8 billion. So we have that to contend with. And we not even generated enough money to even pay salaries, more so to make our commitments and to help, and no wonder you had no medication at the hospital, and the problems were just mounting all over the place. So when I looked at the, the situation, I said, "Look, we can't continue like this." The first thing we had then, I spoke to my friends regionally and internationally, friendly governments, American government, British, Canadian government, European Union, Caribbean governments, and I said, "Look, we will announce that we are going to not be able to pay our debts for a little while." You know, we have to formally announce we have defaulted. We have to, you know, that's a tough, tough decision to take because it means the entire world know that you're bad paid. But in the face of what we had, we could not duck the responsibility we had to face it. But we said, "We will restructure the economy. We will have to do, make some sacrifices on our own. We appeal to our international friends and community to help us." And we sought immediately to, to appoint some debt advisors to look at getting serious haircut on our debt. That started, friends. We met with all international institutions and friendly governments, made meetings available for us, and we started serious negotiations. Friends, I have to spend a little time on this because you must understand what's taking place in Grenada now. So they said, "Look, Prime Minister, you're asking us for help. We're asking us to go to the bondholders and ask them for serious haircut. You're asking us to give you serious cash injection in the country. We want to ask you what you're bringing to the table. What are you asking your own Grenadian people to do?" I said, "Well, I'm sure they're prepared to make some sacrifices." Then we started negotiations. Clearly, they said, "Look, in America, we taxing them state, city, federal. And when you buy something, more taxes again." Everything taxed, taxed. The Europe is the worst. That's what they're telling me. But look, we see in your country, a man has to make $60,000 before he pay a cent. And now you're asking us to give you cash from the same people who pay taxes in our country, and the rate we charging them. Well, we won't be able if you don't want, if you can't get your people to drop the rate so that more people get into the tax into the tax brackets." So we had to say this, one of the toughest decisions, sisters and brothers, in a time of economic depression, to ask, it doesn't matter who, to pay more taxes, that is not the right policy. And philosophically, it's fundamentally against my stomach. We had to do a number of other things to raise property tax at the same time. Again, my stomach hurts. We had to move and increase the customs service charge on certain goods, except basic items. Again, that is more pressure in the country. We had to take a number of other decisions, sisters and brothers, that affect the lives of the people of the country, tough, tough, tough. But we decided at the cabinet level, if we don't do it, we getting no money. We cannot get any debt relief. And therefore, we have more no problem. An economy which was negative growth for four years and a half, the economy was negative. In other words, serious depression. We couldn't continue like this. No investor was coming to Grenada. The then Minister of Finance, no one had a good word to say about him. He's like anti-business, anti-people, anti-everything. Sisters and brothers, so they said, "Look, we have to, if you're ready to do this and to make some sacrifice and ask your people, we're ready to bat for you, I'm ready to bat for you." Sisters and brothers, I would be forcing a little more on the taxes, let me say this. They agreed that the international institution will give us $100 million US dollars in a three-year structural adjustment program in cash. So $100 million this year, you see, $100 next year, and $100 in 2017. So 14, 15, 16, sorry, 14, 15, 16. In addition to that, if you do your part, we are going to put enormous support behind the government, on the bondholders and those we owe to give us a haircut so that Grenada not only would be able to have the cash to be able to invest in, in economic activity, but will be able to get tremendous relief on the debt. Sisters and brothers, in the face of this, I had to talk to my cabinet and the people of the country, address the nation, and I told them, "As tough as it is, and I don't expect them to be happy. I don't expect when I pass, there are people waving me and, and praising me. I expect a few people, like sometime when I pass, I see some cross eyes." And that is expected, but sisters and brothers, let me say this about life. If you want, if you are leader in anything, and you're trying to please everybody in everything you do, you ain't gonna please nobody. My sister and my brother hear me say to my cabinet colleagues, "If some of you had to popular, know something wrong. That means you ain't doing what we're supposed to do." Because popularity contest is not necessarily what maybe, what is right today. We have to take tough unpopular decision to get this country going. Because I'm convinced, sisters and brothers, the same people that curse you today, and they may have the right because they may be hurting. When the things turn around and the country move forward, the same people will praise you tomorrow. I always tell people this. One other worst period in my political life was in 1986, when I were left with infrastructure, we had no crusher. And I had to import some stone from Saint Vincent, I remember that. Oliver, man. And my opponent say, "Well, I'm paid." Everywhere I go, they calling me Stone. Every place I go, I'm getting causing Stone, Stone, Stone. I remember going home one day after a whole day I've been called Stone, every place I go. My son was just seven years, as soon as I reached him, he was, "Stone." I said, "Not from you." He never called me Stone. But sisters and brothers, quite I really want to make, is after the roads get built and the, the infrastructure start getting in place, the same people that the same people that picked a sign and say, "I was dead politically," started praising me. Two years later, I got them, at Christmas time, the end of the year, they called me Man of the Year. But you know what happened? Before that, I say, you know something, when somebody trying to call you a nickname, you think on your nickname yourself and start calling yourself a nickname. So I played a whole mask, I put a lot of stone all over my body. Stone in front here, stone all over the place. And I win a whole mask competition earlier. And I had a good bunch of supporters. I'm making the point, sisters and brothers, sometimes you have to take the right decision. So the point I want to make here is this. A lot of time you hear the argument about what we're getting from the World Program that we implemented, the sacrifices that we're not giving people to make. And as I said to you, it's tough. But it's temporary, sisters and brothers, very temporary. Listen what the pluses are. Besides the cash, right now, our debt is about 1.8 billion dollars. The bondholders amount is about a billion dollars. Now, if, as it looks likely, that we will get at least 50% haircut, and I'm telling you, a few cases already, the bondholders are coming and agreeing to give us more than that. But let's assume we get at least 50%. It means the debt, the money that we will get off our debt will be almost 400 to 500 million dollars. Sisters and brothers, tell me something, that does not worth serious sacrifice on the part of every one of us. If we don't do what they ask, they believe that we should do, and we have to pay this debt, and they will not give us the 100 million US, which works on almost 300 million E C, 100 each year. If we do not get this, tell me, where are we going to go? I asked all our friends in front, social partners, "Give me an alternative. I don't want to do what we asking to do. But tell me what else I must do." Listen, the former Minister of Finance, "Oh, killing the country. Oh, wicked. And how to all the people where they live, no the child, the child didn't, the child bought." This is a man that supervised over the country's fiscal demise, that agreed at the end of every month was selling Grenada's national asset to pay salaries. Could you imagine that? Selling asset to pay salaries, there were no economic activity. But today, is the only dissenting voice together with those who follow him in the National Democratic Congress, that's saying that we should not make the sacrifices. In other words, we should not accept the 300 million E C and we should not accept the 50% haircut at least. Sisters and brothers, I call that very unpatriotic and selfish, sisters and brothers. There can't be no better word to describe it. So my dear sisters and brothers in the diaspora, we are asking every citizen to make a contribution. So we said, and that we said for three years, and if the economy turns around and become robust, we are not going to keep some of those taxes. We don't have to. That's the understanding we have with the international community, assuming that the economy takes off and we start generating senior surplus on the recording side of our budget. Sisters and brothers, we are saying, therefore, if we asking the citizens of the country to make a sacrifice, those of us in the diaspora should come forward to the plate. So we are saying all the conditions that apply to people coming back home remain the same, except for one area, and that's for three years. The vehicle that you get 100% from, you see, is now 50%. Only the vehicle, nothing more. The same amount that you're allowed coming duty-free in all other areas, stand. My sisters and brothers, as I stand here to you tonight, I am not gloating. I am not happy that I have to nonsense, but I have to tell you the truth. And I'm not going to stand and leave here tonight and not say that to you on your hair in other places. So I hope you are not mad with me. But this is for Project Grenada. This is for Grenada, Karakou, and Peti Martinique. My friends, therefore, we are asking all these sacrifices. We are making sure that in the process, look at the benefits in addition. For the first time, 2013, Grenada recorded a positive growth in the economy of the country after almost four and a half years of negative growth. 2013, we had the highest growth rate in the eastern Caribbean coming from where we came from in the last period, 2008 to 2010. That's a big plus. The Ministry of Finance Division, Economic Division, already have said they are now expecting further positive growth based on the numbers we seeing already for the first quarter of the year. And the big projects have not yet started, sisters and brothers. There are these three hotels are now being designed, their land obtained already and ready to move not long from now. We have several marina projects who are ready, in fact, some are on the ground already, like the one in Karakou and Peti Martinique that was stopped by the politics of spite and hate and no backing strength to provide hundreds of jobs and economic activity in the sister island of Karakou. It means not only Karakuna will get jobs at Peti Martinique, but from the mainland, a lot of people will go to Karakou for jobs. My sisters and brothers, in addition, look at this. We are embarking on a major plan for a new teaching hospital. St. George's University identified as a premier offshore medical school, one of the best in the world. That's a fact. I remember when I came here in 1995, and I mentioned St. George University, they had, my colleague Prime Minister wanted to kill me. Today, many of the citizens from the other islands are going to St. George's University, become doctors and to get a serious education because of the stature of that institution. If St. George's University leave us today, we lose at least 15% of our GDP. That's how important that institution is. So now we are agreeing with them and some investors from America here and Europe to set up you St. George's University as a base, as a first-class, establish a new hospital, a first-class teaching hospital with all the major services intact that can sell Grenada as a serious place of health tourism, where people will come to Grenada with the level of medical care they can get in the country, with the level of the doctors that are available at the for the St. George University and for Grenada, to get all the type of operations they need in that hospital and to recuperate in the spice country of Grenada, Karakou and Peti Martinique. The benefits are going to be enormous. No longer with the Grenadians living in New York, retiring and concerned about his health will say, "I cannot go home, I'm going to Florida." I want them to see they're coming back to Grenada, Karakou, and Peti Martinique. So we have given a lot of priority and the Chinese government has, we're working with them to help us in the financing aspect of that facility. So the St. George's University on board, the investors internationally on board, and the financial institution in Washington, is the private sector arm, will also be involved. They have had several discussions with us in opposition and in government. In fact, in opposition, I said I support the plan, but I do not believe Grenada has the money to finance our hospital by itself. So I told them that if we are able to get partners on board, business partners involved, St. George's University play their part, and the international community are prepared to go. Now we have most of that in place. We are ready to go, sisters and brothers. Grenada will provide first-class medical facility in the Caribbean, sisters and brothers. And aside from that, we can't play with health. We, when we came into government, the previous government, Sister Clara said, "We have not stopped any project, the former government did, because a project is not N D C owned or N M P owned, it's a people brilliant own." So if it's good, it's good for the country, we have to keep it. So they started a plan to look at a national health control scheme. We asked Brother Chester Humphrey if he would agree to continue chairing that committee. And we told him, "No, it must be barred, we must bring that plan." Because right now, Sister Clara said, those of us who can afford to pay and not get paid appropriately, we get in free service. Some of us have insurance, but insurance getting away with murder because the government taking what the insurance should be paying. And at the same time, we expect a poor man who has no money at all to buy, to pay for the X-ray at the same price that I have to pay. That's not fair. His life is as important as mine. So we have to subsidize or give him free medical care to make sure that we see it as a fundamental human right, the right to better healthcare, sisters and brothers. We know the problem in the United States, healthcare. I cannot help but say, I think that's a fundamental principle. I cannot see anyone without getting involved in American domestic politics, anyone could oppose a plan to broaden healthcare to all of the country so that everybody's life would be given importance it deserves. Sisters and brothers, as I wind up, let me say this because I really want you to have all the opportunity to ask the questions you want to ask. And I spent half an hour already. This Project Grenada requires absolute unity. My friends, there are people who support the N D C and still support it, who are capable of making a contribution to developing the country. I say, "We want them, come to us, come them in, sisters and brothers." We cannot say because they didn't vote for us, we don't want them around. In fact, I have to constantly talking to some of our supporters. Somebody comes to a political meeting, you see them come. They come to your meeting, they are here to support. You told another them, "Why you doing here? You have to stop that." They have a right there, this is the Grenada, the Prime Minister, the Prime Minister of Grenada, Karakou and Peti Martinique. They don't have to like me. I always tell people, if you don't like it, don't like him. I have enough people that like me, like Grenada, Karakou, and Peti Martinique. And that is what my objective is, and that is what Peter and others are now doing, sisters and brothers. Some will get on with all sorts of foolishness. Because when you're doing something right, don't expect that all will say, "Yeah." That's something, if you expect that, no, no, in the easy. So I am supporting this whole concept of national unity because I firmly believe that is the way to go. When election time comes, people dividing political lines, and you preach your politics, and those who get in office, get in office, and we unite again, building the Grenada, Karakou, and Peti Martinique. That is what it has to be, sisters and brothers. And Peter already said it, you don't have to be a member of N M P or N D C to make a contribution to your country. Healthcare needs you in Grenada. You could make a contribution, send something home to help, to save a life in Grenada. One life is too much to lose, sisters and brothers. So I'm happy and proud of the opportunity God has given me, an opportunity to get out of politics. I consider getting out on high, so to speak. I believe my legacy is at stake. That's why I'm not joking about this. I don't want to lean politics at the time people can say, "I was a champion of dividing the people of the country and being a leader in partisanship." I want it to be said at the end of my period of service that I did the best that I could have done to unite the people of Grenada, Karakou, and Peti Martinique. And I want to show you, I will not do what some of our leaders have done in the past. Wait until they can walk. Wait until they cannot do anything serious and still holding on the leadership of their party. I am proud, sisters and brothers. I am proud to tell you, sisters and brothers, that I have a team of men and women in the new national party who I am convinced can take this country forward under a serious banner of national unity, building Grenada, Karakou, and Peti Martinique. And I want to be there, sisters and brothers, at the end of my service to sit back home and relax and watch the N M P and Grenada and Project Grenada go from strength to strength. That is my dream. And therefore, I have no qualms. When that time comes, and it's not going to be very long, but I'm telling you this, no, I will not be just like this. Because I told you, things are going to be in place. That is my objective. I've seen good leaders leave their party. And when they're ready to leave, they impose a leader on the party, and it never works. I ain't imposing nobody on the country. A leader must evolve through the people, through the political process. That makes sense, that that is what will survive the test of times. Because one thing we must know about our people, we politicians must always remember, the people are always right. Sometimes, when we lose, we say them people we kill. People never we kill. Sometimes, we believe that we better than them. And when they go behind the ballot box, they teach us some lessons. They taught me lessons in 2008 and I accepted it. They taught me lessons in 1990 and I accepted it. Some people have been taught a lesson in 2013 and they haven't accepted yet. They even calling on me to resign already. So, sisters and brothers, finally, let me make the point. Your responsibility, my responsibility, to save our children and our grandchildren. It worries me when I see what's happening to education home and the state of our young people. I know what it is to want an education and have the money to get it. I've seen a lot of young people yearning for opportunities and we have not been able to provide it. Sisters and brothers, whatever you can do in your own little way, remember, your sisters and brothers will need your help. You don't have to do it to a political organization, but do it, you know what, you do it for God and country. Because I've always said, "Put God first, country second, and everything else after that." Sisters and brothers, work for your people. Work for unity. Work for Project Grenada. Let us build together and let us save Grenada, Karakou, and Peti Martinique.
Ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together again. On the right, under the, Dr. Keith Mitchell. We are going to make a slight change in the program. And the reason being that we are operating on grace time now. We have this place here up to 8:30. And if you look at your watches, you will see that 8:30 have already come. But we will still allow a little time for the free talk period, the question and answers, and if you have your criticism, and if you have your comments, we will take that. But before we do that, we really want to thank everybody. Before you trickle out, we want to thank everybody. So at this time, we will ask Mr. Wayne Agustin to come and deliver the vote of thanks. And after the vote of thanks, then you're allowed to come to the mic that is up front and make your comment, make your statements. and make your comment, make your statements, ask your questions.
In recognition, Doctor of the Right Honorable Keith Simacho, Prime Minister of Grenada, Karaku and Pidi Martnik, Honorable Elmen Nimrod, Deputy Prime Minister and Minister for Legal Affairs, Labor, Karaku and Pidi Martnik Affairs and Local Government, Honorable Clarice Modesto-Wing, Minister of Health and Social Security, Mr. Peter Dania, Former Minister for Foreign Affairs and Tourism, His Excellency Mr. Dennis G. Antoine, Permanent Representative of the Grenada, of Grenada to the United Nations, Former Permanent Representatives of Grenada to the United Nations, His Excellency Mr. Derek Jennings, Ambassador to the United Nations with Responsibility for the Office for Coordination of Human Humanitarian Affairs and the Grenadian Diaspora Affairs, Former Counselor Generals of Grenada, Members of the Caribbean Diplomatic Corps, Also to Sister Jovia Raddox, Brooklyn's Regional Representative for Vomita Andrew Corn. Ladies and gentlemen, fellow Grenadians and friends of Grenada, I believe that we are much more informed now than before we left here. And for this, I say, thank you so much for coming out and for your participation. And most importantly, but not least, questions will be taken. So you can get a perspective, and I know you've gotten a full perspective of what's happening in Grenada, Karaku and Pidi Martnik, and we thank you so much for coming out. Give yourself a round of applause. Thank you again, thanks for coming out.
I want to begin by saying very present, good evening to the members of the government, the name of Prime Minister and his delegation.
Yes, speak, speak louder.
Yes. I would like to say very present afternoon to those who attended this wonderful get-together here in the diaspora. I want to begin by commending our Prime Minister and his delegation for doing a wonderful job in bringing the diaspora up to date on the situation in Grenada, especially in its relates to our economic situation. I want to take this opportunity to make one observation, and that is, I believe that Grenada has the potential to accommodate a wonderful faith-based tourism activity. We have a wonderful stadium that could accommodate convention. We have the best beaches for baptism ceremonies. In this regard, I would like to ask what you would like to advise the people in the diaspora to do in promoting Grenada as a faith-based destination?
All right, thank you, we get a question on one of the panel, members of the panel will answer the question. But when you come, because again, we are on a grace period become of time. Don't make a comment, just come with a question, ask your comments, ask your questions, so we would be able to, you know, get it quickly and they answer quickly to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the question. And we in the government, we believe that every activity that to bring people to our beautiful shores would be very welcome. Grenada is strongly religious country, and so we want to encourage the persons who are connected with Grenada's bodies, as you are. And you can hold discussions, and when you have some ideas as to what to do, we can assure you, we will accommodate and facilitate in any way.
Before the next question, I know that there are people who are leaving, and we asking you that you would leave quietly, and if you're still seated, we ask that you would not engage in conversation, because the program is still on and it could be disturbed by the level of different conversations, and at the same time, trying to answer and ask a question. Thank you very much.
Yes, good evening, good evening to the parliament, and I heard a lot of good things about the development of Grenada. One thing I have heard is anything about the infrastructure pertaining to agriculture. And I would very much like to know the plan that the government has for that passing. Thanks.
Unfortunately, my brother, you're right, the time we have really couldn't give us the opportunity. For example, you're right, we hadn't said anything about infrastructure also. And of course, we haven't done anything much on tourism. But clearly, agriculture, we consider a main pillar of economic activity. So one of the things you will see in the Homegrown program, with the finance we are getting, we'll invest a lot more in development of the productive sector, tourism promoting the country, and the development of the agricultural sector, for example, providing more support to the farmers, providing more support and labor support scheme, irrigation and materials for the farming industry in general. And we are, we are embarked now on a program of commercializing government estates, getting away from government hands, because government historically has never been able to manage those estate properly. So we are not selling them, but we are in fact contracting them out to individual persons in the private sector, with the support of the finances they have to maximize the potential results from the agricultural sector. So we have a lot of plans, but we didn't get a chance really to give you a total idea of what those plans are.
Good evening, Prime Minister, good evening everyone. My name is Augustine Tradius Mitchell, and my, my, my point about the dialysis in Grenada and the people, because I've been living in this country for a lot, quite a while. And I've seen too many times, so many people from Grenada come up here, and they have their family back home and they cannot go back into Grenada. I was listening earlier, and they said that we have over 50,000 people, Grenadians in the diaspora. So I was looking forward, with all the organizations we have here in New York, and maybe Canada and England. If we could donate $1 to this, let the organizations here collect the money and give it to the, let the government in Grenada, we get a dialysis machine, and we monitor the government with how they're using it, and we have a special body to monitor the government, so they won't misuse it. And every, like every quarter, all the people who donate the money will get a newsletter telling us what we're doing. And I think this is a very good idea. I spoke to Jocelyn Bob about it, and she told me that she's into it. So I will write her, I will speak to her again about it and help her to organize that thing. Thank you.
Again, thank you for the question, and the use of time. I will just tell you that there is a company that has been providing services of dialysis. We have recently negotiated with them, and we are about to sign an agreement. But we know even so, government's input will be tested and tried. So any assistance that could be given would be welcome, but we are seeking to strengthen that dialysis service in Grenada this time.
Honorable Prime Minister and fellow Grenadians, my name is Glenn LeBogoye from Ladig. And my, my thing is that I've been helping the schools of Ladig wholeheartedly and by myself. And I always sent my barrels to the school. And in 2012, I sent barrel to the private school in Grenada, in Ladig. And there was a little bubble makers, as we recall them, in the shape like all different animals. And, and when they got to the customs, they took it, because they said they considered arms, because they have triggers. I tried my best, I tried with the Counselor General of Customs Office here, I tried with everybody in Grenada. The Commissioner of Police, I went to customs, the Controller of Customs didn't know about it, so therefore, he didn't reach to him, and I never got a letter of whether destroyed or what happened. But at the same time, they have the same bubble makers in an Indian store in Grandville selling for $40. So, my thing is, I would like whoever just to look into that matter for me, please, and tell me where are the arms that they sent to Grenada? When do you come in?
My dear sister, I have a minister responsible for the customs, I had to take some responsibility. It wasn't my time, Prime Minister. But I'll follow, but I can't tell you that something would still be in the customs after, after two years. So, but I, we don't, I don't know anything about this, but we will check, that's all I can tell you.
Good evening, Prime Minister, Ministers of Government, everyone here. Just wanted to get one thing clear, just wanted to make sure, because I was listening to the speech from the parliament, and just wanted to make sure that only the vehicle will be taxed, will be given the half price off. Everything else will be, will be, because I want to make sure, because I was listening to parliament, and yeah, I was kind of confused. So if you're telling me now that only the vehicle will be taxed, I just want to make sure that clear.
What I'm saying is that every condition that a diaspora person coming home and gone before will be ahead to accept the vehicle in question that goes from 100 to 50%. That's, that's the issue. Nutrational, that's all, we have not touched anything else.
All right, again, because of time constraints, the man with the hat at the back of the line will be the last person we will be able to direct into the Prime Minister.
I would like to find out what is the situation with the university, the project for University of Western Beach in Spring Valley? And secondly, I would like to find out. No, not secondly, it's a continuation. And why were the people of Grenada told that the land was purchased by the NDC from the shareholders and sold to the government?
Yes, well, first of all, let me say that we are pushing forward with the project, clearly. But don't forget, we can't even pay debts right now, and we couldn't even buy medication when we got in. And you know all that I said before. So the idea of finding $7 million to pay for the land is, is an issue, it's a serious issue. So that's part of the problem, the university requires us to be able to provide resources, the monies that we owe them. They're looking forward to get, because they need it to embark on the construction. And a lot of the governments in the region owe them, in fact, Bob, it's owed almost 90-plus million dollars. So there is a financial problem in part of the university also. So we are pushing forward the project, the only problem is that the university has some challenges also, and we have some challenges. And it is, it is a fact, sisters, that the land was, was bought by a company which had some persons who were ministers of government on in that company, and it was then sold on to government. And I have a fundamental problem with this. Some people are talking corruption. I don't see how any member of my government will go and buy a piece of land knowing that the government wants it, buy it, and then sell it to the government. Clearly, they're not buying it for charity, they clearly was buying it as a part really of making money, which precisely this.
I'm not asking a question, but I want to make it clear that this is totally untrue.
Well, my dear, the facts are there, the company is there. I'm talking from cabinet papers, my dear, I'm sorry that you don't agree with me, but I'm not speaking from the top of my head, these are facts. Ask, ask, can, ask Simmons if he was not a member of that company, as an example, just ask him. I could tell you more persons who are it, but not Peter David.
My name is Sleep International. Yes, sir. My comment, my statement, I can make here. I heard the Prime Minister preach Brian Henson this evening, preach unity. Then we thought about 15 years ago, where were these, where were these actions? We found now one really bad, that's to the Prime Minister. Also, so get to live, we have questions. What I'd like to ask you, why do you take us in a tourist industry? You want, what member was he before in the last group? He said.
Okay, the one we first asked, you asked me where was the unity before? But my friends, I think I, I actually answered your question already. I said, there were mistakes made by all of us in government before. I wish some of the errors we made, we did not make it. But we cannot live in the past, I'm sure Peter will tell you the same thing. So I am honest enough to admit, there were some weaknesses, and we are doing everything to correct it now.
So we don't know what, so we take 15 years to realize that?
Well, my friend, sometimes, look, wait, wait, let me tell you this. Sometimes, maybe 30 years, let me tell you this, I wrote Jerry Brown recently. I'm just saying, I want Jerry Brown to answer a question by national television. How come you said that 35 years ago, and now you're saying something? He said, gentlemen, he said, you tell me something. There is a common name, Governor Mombi. You want to tell me I come back after 25 years and do this, and don't say the same thing that I said 30 years ago? You are, you're not telling me that I should change? Take for example you, you want to tell me things that you did 30 years ago and I'll do it again?
Good afternoon, Prime Minister, members of parliament. I'm close to you. I've listened to all your speeches, killing. And I've listened to them killing, and over and over again, there's a lot of things that you said in your campaign, and often presently, that is not being delivered and is not true. Like investors, like the taxes. When will we stop lying for our people, that is so crazy that you care about? That's what I would want you, we tired of the lies, and we, everyone know, when, when is going to stop?
So my brother, what lies in your mind? Wait, 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 I mean, I'm studying already, so I can just repeat what you said. You said I'm lying about investors, let me say this to you.
I didn't say you lie about investors. The one, Mrs. Toffler, and Toffler, I said, you mean your speeches, you talk about you have any version. You talk about the taxes you would increase it, and this is.
But I know, but I, that you're kidding, but my brother, you're kidding me, I'm lying on that stuff. I don't know why you, they lying, that's what you're asking me. But let me, let me tell you, I said what was correct, and it's precisely what is happening now. What you expect, my brother, is that investors would be start building a hotel overnight, in few months. You are, you will know that if you're going to build a hotel, you have to do a lot of testing of the drums that you have used. All the technical expertise take time, you have to do design, that has to be passed and approved, you can't just want to put on a building. So we have right now three major hotels, and being designed right now. So I have not lied about investors. In fact, I point out there, there were several more activities. But I'm not talking about the airport in Caracu was a major investment tool for development. The airport in San George has also been constructed and renovated and expanded. There's opportunity. I only give you a few, my brother. Secondly, I'm sure everybody heard me say, when I got into government and saw the state of the finances, that I realized we had to take some tough decisions, temporarily, to get all act together. And if we have not done it, my brother, and ask our people to make sacrifice, we won't get the resources to improve the economy of the country. So I don't know how you could be accusing me of lying, when in fact, I am telling you exactly what the situation was.
Yeah, but the person speaks.
You may disagree with me. You may disagree with me, my brother. My brother. My brother, let me just say this to the brother. I have no problem with a brother disagreeing with me. That's fine. What I cannot do is accusing me of lying. I did not lie.
Good afternoon, my name is Jeanette Ansois. I was born in Grenada, and this is addressed to Dr. Peter Mitchell. As head of party Grenada, what has been implemented to correct the debt that Grenada has incurred? And as a mathematician, and as a mathematician, right? Since you see how much money Grenada owes, how do you think, like, give it back? Like, what breaks Grenada is going to give back to the people? And are we going to give up Grenada in the end? Like, Grenada is going to all, oh, oh, Grenada is going to owe to Grenadians?
Well, my dear, I just want to say that, were you here when I was talking about the debt?
No.
No, no, listen. Maybe I didn't get that point you were playing on.
No, as a mathematician, so many, Grenada is going to owe, talking about Grenada.
Just listen to me, listen to me. I'm trying to get to you, and since I'm trying to do this. I said, the debt we owe, we have gone to a France regional air international.
Yeah, I got that.
And we expect to get significant reduction. So the debt we have now in the box, in the not-too-distant future, when the structural adjustment program is signed and ready to go, which is soon, will be significantly reduced by as much as 400, 500 million dollars. So that's a significant amount. So if we get that, and we get monies towards so developed economy, by growing economy, we'll make necessary revenue, will help us to pay the remaining portion. So we won't have to sell or constrain an asset like previous government did.
Please.
Okay?
Good evening, my name is Martin Johnson. I have listened to the various discussion and presentations I enjoy. And I have taken away a bit that the humanitarian program is providing a program for you. I have not heard, wait on it, they are employing a lot of this company. I have heard that the CEO of the, I've also heard that the CEO of Grenada, which you inherited, the NAB body. And as a concerned Grenadian, I want to pose this question to you and yourself, to the Prime Minister. What new creative and different that you have to offer the people of Grenada that will enhance the ability for them to have to be more productive, or be more valuable, they have the opportunity in Grenada? And if so, can you elaborate on the new creative different things that you're proposing to pose to help them achieve their opportunity in Grenada with a law under the administration?
Training, key. Sister Carrie talked about that, she didn't go into details. Unless you're poor people, even if you bring investors, other people are come from abroad, take the jobs. So the humanitarian people have been trained to prepare them for the lot of hotel projects, for example. There are a lot of other projects that are coming, the technical skills required. They have been trained in those areas to accept the responsibility in those areas. The other key area is small business development. If you look at countries that are successful, if the people doing this, well, they have not been employed by government, are the best way to go. So part of the money that we're getting on the Homegrown Program, we are going to invest it in training, human resource development, and also the question of small business. We are going to create, give people some loans to help them to develop themselves and the skills that they have, and create the business opportunities that can employ people instead of waiting for government to give them a job. We also have institutions like MARE, doing a lot of community activities, which were in fact constrained under the previous government. They're now doing a number of projects around the country, empowering people and helping them to help themselves. We are going to invest in the fishing industry, providing more support to fishermen. We want to make the young people realize fishing is not a bad profession. It's not what we used to see before. But if they have the tools, the technology, they can make serious monies. Like you see fishermen in North America, some of the most prosperous people are fishermen and farmers. So give them the right tools, and we'll change Grenada permanently, my brother.
I agree to that extent. I do believe that Grenadians should be able to provide whatever resources that they can to the people. But I'm talking general employment as a whole. Is there a serious proposal for general employment as opposed to the youth employment?
Well, employment, we're talking about investment. When the jobs come, like three hotels, my brother. You're talking 400, 500 persons being employed in a hotel. Like Sanders, you know, have employed over 600, 700 persons. So every hotel that comes, every marina project, I mentioned the one in Caracu, hundreds of jobs they're talking about. Because they're building several facilities, not just the marina, but also several housing units around there for people coming here. And therefore, they have to employ a number of persons to service that particular project. So the investment and the job creation are going to vary in several. What is agriculture, tourism, healthcare, remember to talk about it, the health project? That will employ hundreds of people. And at the same time, bring investment to the country unseen in the past.
Again, because of time, my brother, you were the last person. And I cannot guarantee that they will get a full answer for your question. When they have answered to the brother's question, it's given, we will have to leave the building. We cannot just send you and have conversation. Any conversation has to be on the sidewalk, on the outside of the premises, because we head up to it.
Reform is an important tool in that fight also, because most of the land in Grenada privately owned. Most, a lot of it by poor families. However, those poor families are not able to exploit the true economic potential of those lands, because they cannot go to the bank and get a loan, start a business, or even send their kids to school. So when it comes to land reform, I would like to know what measures need to give priority in that reform process?
Thank you very much. Extremely important question. Now, would I say to you that primarily, as you rightly said, wasn't land that private in their own? But most persons do not have good title to their lands. Like the parents or the grandparents might have said to them, well, this land is yours, but they got no title. And you rightly said that they cannot go to the bank, because the title is not public. So if you go to the bank, the bank will say to you, we cannot give you a mortgage, or we cannot give you a loan, this is not a title. We are now moving to correct this. So that if someone has title, which you call the statutory declaration, now it could apply to a judge. If we pass the piece of legislation, they can now go and apply to a judge. And that judge would confirm the title has been good, and would be accepted for business purposes. But right now, those with statutory declaration, it's not a recognized or a title that is on it. So that's what we're moving to do. So most people would get good title, so they could go to the bank, of course, and could have gone and get a money.
Okay, brothers and sisters, we really want to thank you again, and let us remember that we have to leave the building now, so that we can greet each other on the outside. Thank you very much.
Take care. Good to see you.
We might see you in July. July, yeah, this year. I see somebody in October.